Yeah, that was.
All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, December 17th, the last scheduled meeting of the year. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments. Are there any public comments from the board?
No.
This is probably more of an announcement, but I want to just make the community, remind the community that the Municipal Building Design Committee meets on the first and third Monday of each month. We've been meeting for the last several months, and now we are working with an architectural team as we work on designing the new town hall. So I just want to, again, invite any member of the public to attend. These meetings are unique in that we do have the public participate at any point in time during the meeting, and so you can ask questions, you can get involved in the conversation and discussion. But again, I do encourage anyone to attend. We recently went through an iteration looking at some initial kind of design concepts, so we are pretty in-depth in that process. And our next meeting in January will be another revision, and in mid-January, the same thing. So if there's anything, again, that you have any interest in being able to participate, please do. These are conducted remotely, and there's a Zoom link to be able to attend, and encourage all members of the community, 5:30, first and third Monday of each month. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments from the public? All right, seeing none, move on to announcements. I don't have any tonight. Are there any announcements? Communications from other boards? I also don't have any, and I don't see anyone here that isn't scheduled to be here. All right, so we'll move on to our scheduled meetings. And up first, we have an introduction of Deb Goodsell, our new Council on Aging Director. So I had the opportunity to meet our new Council on Aging Director last week. I'm excited to welcome her here tonight. I'm sure she'll do a great job. And Debbie, if you want to come up too, I know you probably have something you'd like to say as well. So Deb, if you'd like to introduce yourself, you can.
Hi, my name's Debbie Goodsell, and I'm coming to you from Clinton Council on Aging. And Sue and I have kind of led parallel Council on Aging lives over the last 10 years, and I'm very excited to be coming here and getting to fill Sue's eight-and-a-half, size eight-and-a-half shoes.
Six-and-a-half.
Oh, six-and-a-half, sorry. My mistake. So just, I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Debbie and I, like she says, we've crossed paths for the past 10 years. We've shared many program ideas. I can't think of a better person to take over this job. She's really good at what she does, and I know she's going to do a great job here. And I want to thank the Hiring Committee because they did a great job picking her, and she's not going to disappoint you at all.
So first of all, she has a great name. Can't get better than that. But I was just a fly on the wall in the hiring process, but Julie turned to me and she said, "Apparently I should never play poker." Because she turned around and said to me, "You are beaming through this whole process, so I don't have to ask you what you thought." And I am so delighted to welcome the other Deb to this team. She's going to be an amazing asset. I cannot speak highly enough of her, and we've already had a couple conversations, and I cannot wait for her to join us. I'm so sad to see Sue leaving, but the bittersweet is made sweet now by Deb joining us, so.
And I have Sue's cell number.
So.
I don't know, soon it'll be Sue who?
Oh.
That's what I'm hearing. I don't know.
You wear his pajama month for me, so.
I did not think so, but I think that we're going to let Sue enjoy her wine, and she's not going to have a lot of worries, so.
I know I won't. Deb's going to be great.
Did you bring anybody to bring down the expectations? Because they've set them up here. The best you can do is hit them. You want somebody to lower them a little bit.
Yeah. It'll be fine. We'll be fine.
Well, welcome to Lunenburg, Deb. We're so excited to have you here. Are there any other comments from the board?
No. Welcome aboard. I mean, with glowing recommendations like that, we look forward to having you onboard.
Thanks. It'll be great. Bye.
Well, we can't welcome our new Council on Aging Director without properly thanking and recognizing our outgoing Council on Aging Director. So Sue, I have a proclamation to read for you. Whereas Susan B. Dougherty started working for the Council on Aging as the Administrative Assistant in 1996, and was elevated to Interim Director and then Director in August of 2015. And whereas, under her management, the center improved and expanded the services the center provides by expanding hours from four days to five days a week, including evenings, and adding hours and elevating salaries for her staff. And whereas, she oversaw many improvements to the center, including the introduction of the Memory Cafe, the Eagle Scout Walkway Construction, the expansion and improvement of the Senior Newsletter, the completion of the backyard patio and entry gate, the installation of a new road sign providing directions to the center, and after much advocacy, the purchase and installation of a new generator, making the center a seasonal cooling and heating place for those in need. And whereas, during her tenure, the name of the center was changed from the Eagle House Senior Center to the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, and many new and innovative programs were initiated, such as Are You Okay?, Pickleball, the Volunteer Recognition Ceremony, Community Garden Boxes, Tap Dancing, intergenerational programs, the Annual Tea Party, the Century Club, and the Weekly Film Program. And whereas, during her tenure as Director, she elevated the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center to be the gem of the town and the home away from home to hundreds of seniors. And whereas, her work and advocacy gained her the respect of her staff and the elder community in town, and improved the health and wellness of senior citizens in the town of Lunenburg. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lunenburg Select Board hereby recognizes Susan B. Dougherty for advocacy and community building which has improved the services the town of Lunenburg provides and has greatly increased the quality of life for senior citizens in town. As such, the Lunenburg Select Board hereby declares December 30th to be Golden Age Day in the town of Lunenburg, to remember and honor the contributions of Susan B. Dougherty to the town of Lunenburg and to celebrate the senior community. May seniors and residents of the town of Lunenburg gather at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center to celebrate her contributions for years to come.
Thank you. You know how much I love.
I mean, you take credit for all of those things.
Where's the press?
Thank you.
No, we don't.
Thank you.
There you go. Told you we got to open it up.
All right.
Pat and you see. Jane, you should talk too. Oh, beautiful. What a lovely group. Here, perfect.
Thank you.
Now you have something to read while you have your wine.
All right. Thank you, Deb, for coming in tonight. It was so nice to meet you, and I'm glad the community got to meet you as well. I look forward to working with you. And congratulations, Sue. Thank you for everything. All right, up next, we have a presentation regarding the Town Manager Screening Committee's status. So I'll welcome up Tim Murphy, the Chair of the Committee, and John Petron as well for an update on their search.
I hope we do as well as our screening as you guys did with your screening.
Me too.
Yes, same.
So thank you for having us here tonight, and Tim was the Chair of the Committee. So I just want to thank you first for the Committee. It was a very good committee. Tom represented the Board. We also had Tim, Tom, Peter Beardmore, Chris Bernard, and Matthew Brenner, and they worked very well as a team. And so we finished the work at the screening level. And so now we're before the Select Board to move forward with the process. So this started several months ago with Community Paradigm, John Petron, and we were hired to assist the town, you know, with the search. And so I've spoken to, you know, all of you by Zoom, basically. And we met with many department heads and various folks and put together the position statement. We did a recruitment, and we received the applications, and the Committee interviewed six people. And so after that, they, I think, are excited to present three finalists to the Board for final interview. So we'll be ready for that. So at this stage, we're not announcing finalists because we're in the reference and background checks. So as we had talked about with our firm, we do references on all finalists, not just the finalists in the end, so that you have an understanding prior to, you know, your interviews as to these candidates. So we are in a process of doing the reference and background checks on the three finalists. We'll be ready to present those the week prior to. So we always do it a week ahead of the interviews, and you'll have the information from us as to the finalists, their resumes, their cover letters, and a report from us, you know, as to these reviews that go out. So we're scheduled, originally, we had set aside two nights in case it was going to be four, but it is three candidates, so.
Or faces snow.
Yeah. So we're available, you know, we had said January 14th and 15th was the original dates we worked with Carter. So hopefully you'll be ready for interviews on January 14th to interview the three finalists. And then you've got a couple of decisions to make from there. You know, are you looking to make the appointment the same night? You know, which, again, it's a half and half. Some boards, you know, are ready to make the appointments the same night. Some want the opportunity to think about it. I always say, don't think about it too long because candidates get, you know, itchy, you know, at that piece. So you could say, you know, make appointments the same night, or you've set aside two nights already, so you have an opportunity to have a second meeting if you're ready for it. You can schedule the 14th for interviews and an appointment and see where you are, you know, but then also have the backup date of the 15th in the back pocket, you know, if you're not ready at that point. A couple of things to get ready for, for the interviews. One is the set of questions you'd like to ask. So I can work through the Chair and then through the Committee and send you some suggested questions, you know, to take a look at. The second is, how do you want to ask the questions? Sometimes the Board wants to ask the questions. Sometimes you leave it up to me to, you know, ask the questions. And the Screening Committee, usually it's the Screening Committee that's always with, you know, our firm doing the question-asking, and they saw how we do that, you know, going through. So maybe Tom has an opinion, you know, for the Board on that. But that's a decision, you know, you need to make, is how do you want to process the interviews that night? Are we doing one-hour interviews, which is kind of the norm, and what time can we start? You know, all that type of stuff with that. So then the last thing I would suggest is you be ready, you know, for that period to figure out the next step, which is the contract. So the contract is a negotiation that you need to do with whoever you choose going forward. And who is going to be your bargaining team to meet with the candidates that selected? So that's only the beginning. Selecting the candidate, you know, finalists is only the beginning. The next step is coming to an agreement. And, you know, does the Board have, you know, in mind, we advertise the salary as a plus or minus. Now it's up to you to decide the plus or minus, you know, at that point in time, and then what the rest of the contract's going to look like. You obviously have legal counsel, Labor Counsel, and Mark Terry, you know, who can certainly assist, you know, with that process if needed. But you should maybe be ready in advance, you know, for that, so that you can get going right away, you know, once your candidate, you know, is selected, and you can then have your team ready to negotiate with that candidate and try to get it done in the shortest amount of timeframe. One thing you have to remember is some, you know, depending who's selected, you know, some people have notice periods, you know, that they have to give prior to, you know, being able to move forward. It's not always just a two-week period, like, you know, in other positions. Sometimes it's up to two months, but just to keep that in mind as you go forward. So I think that's just, you know, the grand overview. Tim, Tom, have I?
Community Paradigm was great to work with, so I would suggest to you that is, let them take some of the lead. You're all smart people, but, you know, this is what they do, and they know how they do it, and they were excellent to work with. It really felt like we needed a FERV to help us recruit because it's a tough market right now, and locally where we are, you know, we're not going to attract as many people, you know, from long distances unless they want to relocate. So, you know, as you go through it, you know, lean on them. This is what they do. They came extremely highly recommended, and it has proved to be well worth the money spent.
Oh, thank you.
I would agree, and I would say that from the interviewing process, we let John ask the questions, but we were able to ask follow-up questions, which is good. It kept the pace going. And so that was, that worked out well. I think we should be ready with, you know, a contract, at least a structure of a contract, and fill in the blanks just so we're not doing that from scratch. And also, I think that we should do, I mean, we should use the 14th and 15th because we don't want it to last long. Once people's names are public and they're out looking, they're, you know, people get cold feet, or other people get snatched up because they're maybe interviewing for other places. So we want it straight quickly.
When we started this process, the market was very light, you know, when we began this process in the August, September. All of a sudden, I've gotten two calls today, you know, just, you know, about people, you know, with openings, and the market has heated up tremendously in the last two months. It was the slowest year we've seen up until October, and now it's looking like it's going to be one of the busiest years, just in general, you know, as to how many openings are out there. And right now, I've never seen so many openings at one time as there are, you know, right now and some of the others that are coming open. So you've got a couple towns, you know, you know, right in your area, you know, that we weren't talking about in August, and September is being open, but they're open now. So just, I think it's just wise to, you're on a path. Stay on the path, and your timing is there, so.
Yep.
All right. So it sounds like you're suggesting that we figure out a couple of things. The first is whether or not we want to allow you pretty much to conduct the interview and then have us sort of ask follow-up questions and still be engaged where you're sort of leading it?
Yep.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that at all, especially if, you know, you guys were on the Committee and went through that, and if you guys are recommending it, then Tom.
And let me just say, it's your interview, you know, so if you want to ask follow-ups, it's not about asking my permission or anything. Let's just jump in, you know. So we keep it, you know, pretty, you know, it was pretty low-key.
Very informal.
Well, I think with each candidate, I had different questions I wanted to ask based upon their background, based upon their experiences. When we hit, the last time we did a Town Manager Select Screening Committee, we had set questions. We asked of each candidate the exact same questions so we could compare and contrast. So that was a different way to approach it. But I liked the looseness of where we could just jump in because different candidates have different questions.
The follow-ups are different based on their experience.
What might be helpful is if you submitted to the Board the questions that were asked. I made a list of all the ones from the sheet that you did ask the most, just so they know. But some of them may want to hear those again, or they may want to hear other ones. I think it should be up to the Board, what, at least what the potential questions are.
So that's a good point, Tom. What I always do is I always submit the rubric that we used, plus a suggestion of where to go. So they'll see the, you know, because we had that three-page rubric we used. They'll see that, you know, and, you know, so you can see where we were. And, you know, that is a little more loose because, you know, there were questions, but there were follow-ups, and depending where we were, you know, but we pretty much stuck to the path all the way through. Some candidates, you know, depending on their background, if someone had a strong background in one area, we didn't stick about asking, you know, from their area. We made sure they understood it. Other areas that they didn't have as much background, we, you know, delved into a little bit more. But the questions you'll be asking, I'll send you the questions so you can see to get into it.
All right. Thank you. So what do you guys think about that, letting him sort of take the lead on the interviews, Renee?
Yeah, I think that's, that's good. Can I ask a question about the interview process? Did the candidates give a presentation to the Screening Committee? Was that part of...
They gave a written, written letter about something that they've written in the past, and then they spoke to it and explained it.
Not a, not a formal presentation.
Okay.
So they submitted a writing sample and then explained it, so no, there was no presentation.
Will that, will they do the same for us?
That's, we could, we could.
I would like that. That would be my.
An actual presentation?
Well, some.
Rather than just.
Not, not a 45, you know, a 10-minute.
No, but then we need a little bit more time, you know, than one hour, you know. So you need an hour for the questions, you know, to get a sense. If a presentation is top, you should add 15 minutes then, you know, to the interview, you know, so we can talk about that, you know. So if you, as Chair, want to work, you know, and decide how that goes, we've got time to, you know, to decide that. But we'll, you know, we can certainly work that in. That's your choice. That's what we're here to do, is work with you.
But you fit it into an hour when the Screening Committee did it.
Yes, and only one person went over, and that was by four minutes.
You sure it was four?
It was, it was four because I was looking at the clock. I was looking straight at the clock. No, no, John, I mean, that's, that's the good thing about having somebody present the questions, because while we're intent on listening to the answers, he's looking at the time, and so we'll try to move it along. I mean, again, keeping it professional, but, I mean, it worked better that way. And also, so many times when, when people who aren't used to interviewing, interview people, they have long lead-ins about, they have to set up the whole scenario, and it takes 15 minutes. I'm like, oh my, just, you have a question.
That's, that's the biggest thing when, when others are interviewing, is sometimes there's too much information and too much personal, you know, info going across. And, you know, I do this on a regular basis, and as I think they saw, my system is pretty even keel, you know, going through. And I'm, you know, I'm not given a lot of background. They were supposed to do their homework prior to, you know, for the background. They should be answering based on their knowledge base, as well as a little bit of information, you know, as to Lunenburg. What did they learn, you know, about the community?
I think what you might need to do, though, is clarify for them what we mean by presentation.
Absolutely.
Because none of them really made a presentation, I didn't feel.
But I think a presentation, I'm with, at this stage, I'm with Ms. Emke. I think that a presentation would be good, but you've got to keep it to five slides or less.
Yeah.
I want a quick presentation of something.
I would like to see slides. I think, you know, that's something that this person's going to be doing a lot in terms of keeping it short, like you said, but I think a presentation would be good to see.
That's fine.
Keeping a presentation short is nice, too.
Yeah, short and sweet, but seeing that skill set, I think, is important. I agree.
With some slides, yeah.
So if we can schedule maybe an hour and 15 minutes per, you know, and so that's why starting at seven is not a good time, you know, to start when you're looking at that, because you're going to be tired, you know, by the time you get to the last candidate. I always recommend starting at four or five, you know, if you can, you know, getting through the evening. That way, you know, almost everybody is, you know, in a fresher mode to get it through, so if that's possible.
We did three interviews each night and started at six, and that worked out fine. So six would be the latest. If we can start at 5:30, it would be great, because we're going to go an hour and 15 minutes. But, you know, again, you want to end around 9:30-ish, not really much later.
Well, how early can you guys be available on the 14th for the interviews?
We're talking January, I'm just looking at the dates.
Yep.
Just the 14th, not the 14th and the 15th for early hours, right?
Right.
Yeah, so the early hours would just be the 14th.
Because I could do one day early, but not two.
Yeah, because we'll just do one day for interviews.
Yes, exactly. And if you need the decision, you can do it at a seven o'clock timeframe, you know, the next night, so.
And what I was thinking too, when we were scheduling this, I thought it was good to set aside two days in the case that we had four candidates, but if we didn't, we could do interviews on the 14th and then meet again on the 15th.
Which I think would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to deliberate after, first of all, if you deliberate right after, the person who you interviewed last has that edge up because they're the last people to speak and, you know.
I like the data.
Right. You want, you want to be able to mull over your notes and things like that, so I would agree with that.
Yeah. And that, obviously, we can just do at seven, like we normally do. So on Tuesday the 14th, are you guys going to be able to come in a little early? Like, is five too early?
Five would be too early. 5:30 would be the earliest.
5:30?
Yeah, 5:30.
I can do 5:30.
I can do 5:30.
Yeah. Michael Ray?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. So go with 5:30.
All right, so do 5:30, six, whatever, 6:45, and then seven, eight o'clock.
About four hours.
Right.
Yeah.
Having trouble.
We won't have a regular agenda.
It's past my bedtime, Carter.
No, we'll just do the interviews.
Okay.
Are you going to do it here? We did, we did one of our meetings, one of our interviews over at the high school. It was very, very exciting.
This is not, I'll tell you, this is not a.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, too.
You know.
You can be in this room and be at the table.
Or the Sedonik Room at the library. I think that's a nicer room.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
For sitting down.
It's got to be, it's got to be recorded.
Yeah, they have the.
Unlike, we had the luxury of doing it in executive.
Right.
Do you think there'd be public attendance? Do you think?
They may. There needs to, there needs to be the ability.
Yeah, so we need to have some space.
Typically, you have a couple of people, and most of what, but people do watch it. So having the, you know, the capability of being live on TV is key, you know, so.
Right. Gotcha.
Well, if we're going to do it live, then there aren't many rooms. Then this room.
So we can work, I can work with Carter. You can work with and figure, you know, we don't have to decide that immediately.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
You know, so we can figure that out. You guys can, you know, mull it over as to the best location. But again, being a little bit more comfortable than this is, you know, makes for a better interview.
Right. I was going to bring that up and see what people thought, so it's.
I like the congressional grilling.
I haven't stood at a podium like this in a long time, Tom, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, a couple thoughts. So I do think that a sit-down is obviously more comfortable, but I do think the Town Manager is in a position where they have to present a lot. And I do see the value in them standing at a podium for an hour because town meeting is many hours, and they're standing at a podium. And I think that that's a good representation for the Board, so I'm kind of either way on it. Normally, in an interview, I do think there's a lot of value in the people who are, you have to work with, being able to ask questions, because you can kind of get that interplay. In this case, I think the way that you framed it, the fact that our meetings are recorded, you know, any candidate has likely watched several of our meetings already prior to coming, I think, get a good feel for personality. So I think that what you're presenting makes a lot of sense. You know, so I haven't said too much because I'm just in agreement with all that's being said.
You can have the podium set up for the actual presentation portion, you know, but, you know, having a candidate, you know, comfortable, you know, because it's a.
An hour interview.
He's been through it, I've been through it. In a public setting, it's, it's a little difficult when you're vying for that job. You are not the Town Manager here yet. You're vying for the job, something on the table. You want the candidate a little bit comfortable, you know, in doing so.
So it sounds like we're going to be getting some questions from you over the next, excuse me, shortly, for us to kind of look at, and we'll probably talk about it in January. It looks like we have one meeting prior to these interviews. I think it would also be helpful for members of the public to be able to submit questions to us, for us to consider asking. You know, I'm sure that there may be some pressing questions that some residents at home want to make sure get asked. But I think it would be helpful, my opinion, is also giving the public these couple of weeks to find a way to submit questions.
As long as they're submitting them to the Board for consideration and being considered prior to, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to everyone watching, if you have questions, you can submit them to me, and we can add it to the list. So let's go back to the presentation. Do we want to just say any sort of topic you want? How do we want to present that part of it to the candidates?
I'm fine with any municipal-related topic.
Yeah.
I don't want somebody to give me a cooking recipe.
Sure.
What I did on my summer vacation.
Do you have a suggestion on that? I mean, should we narrow it? Or do you think?
It's the first time we've done it that way. I'll come up with something and send it to Carter for consideration, but I think basically, you know, something that they've presented in the past, you know, you know, something as to a rate structure, or something that, you know, that has points and counterpoints, and basically, consideration, it's almost submitting to the Board to consider. So it's a proposal for the Board to consider, I think, is probably the best way to do it.
And I like the idea of having them maybe be up and presenting at the podium for the presentation, and then maybe it's all moved down there, so you kind of see both.
Sure.
And I would probably say, I mean, all, all the candidates, I think, would have done presentations of some kind at a town meeting, so they could have an article that was already done. or something, you know, that has points and counterpoints and basically consideration. It, it's almost submitting to the board to consider. So it's a proposal for the board to consider, I think, is probably the best way to do it.
And I like the idea of having them maybe be up and presenting at the podium for the presentation and then maybe it's all moved down there.
Yeah, I agree.
To kind of see both.
Sure.
And I, I would probably say, I mean, all, all the candidates, I think, would have done presentations of some kind at a town meeting. So they could have an article that was already done that they can explain.
Right.
I agree with you.
It would be a new presentation, right?
Right.
It would be something that they've already.
Well, how would we know?
Right. Well, I mean, suppose.
All three candidates have good municipal experience, you know, so it's not going to be an issue. I think it'll be them figuring out which one they're going to choose to submit.
All right, cool. Well, I think we've covered everything that you've asked so far, right? Is there anything else that I'm missing?
No, so if you can just settle, you know, the whole thing of the negotiation as well as, you know, the, the parameters of the contract to get it moving once you're going, I think that'll get things going, you know, after the fact. And I think we've covered everything else, so I'll send questions and, you know, come up with, you know, some framework of the presentation, no problem, and I think we'll be good to go.
I would say the second evening, you'd want to, you'd want to make sure that you have listed an executive session. If we choose a candidate, so we can talk about contract negotiations about what we want to offer.
Okay.
On the second night.
And I was going to ask, you mentioned like a bargaining team. Normally that's just the entire board, right? Would we do anything?
You can't do that.
It's almost never the entire board. Usually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, because at that point, you've got a, you've got a, you know, an issue with open meeting law and pieces. So usually it's two members of the board with, you know, potentially an administrative, you know, person, you know, sitting in or, you know, usually not counsel, but in this case.
Right.
You can get advice from counsel prior to if you need to.
The last two that were done, I was, I think I was, I was part of one and I was the sole one-on-one. So it's just a matter of negotiating with the person and bringing it back to the board. I mean.
Exactly.
The person who's negotiating is just knows what, I mean, like we do with collective bargaining. We know what we're asking and what we're looking for and then they go and present it and they get counters and they bring it back. And, you know, then they bring it to the whole, the whole board. The whole board votes on it, so.
Yeah.
Anyone interested in doing that?
I am.
Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we can discuss that more, but, all right, anything else?
No, at this point, again, I want to thank the committee. They, you know, their, their work is done, you know, the screening committee. And they were excellent to work with. So I just want to make sure, you know, they get, you know, due recognition, you know.
They don't always have to have a screening committee to start. Usually they, they start right with the board. So we were just a different process for them to have to deal with. The whole idea of doing presentations, you can hear them say, hmm, you know, we don't usually do that. So we're doing things a little bit differently, but that's good.
It's Lunenburg for you.
Yeah, having a screening committee, I think, is helpful.
All right, cool. Thank you very much, John. Are there any other questions while we?
No, I want to, I want to thank John for running a great, and, and the chair for running a really good committee. I think we stayed on task, on schedule. We, we were all skeptical about the number of candidates we got, but it turned out to be very fruitful, I think, because the, the three that we'll be interviewing would be, are very good candidates.
And just a final note, they've been sworn that, you know, the other candidates will never be released. It's confident, it was confidential process. The only candidates that will ever be talked about from the committee will be the three finalists. So the others stay in confidence, which is the way these processes work, you know, going forward. But, so it was a pleasure. It was very difficult keeping the chair intact and, and line a couple of times. We all managed to, you know, keep it going, you know, at the meetings.
All right, well, thank you so much, John. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you all for your work. Thank you.
All right, folks, thank you.
All right, up next, we have a presentation on the FY twenty-four year-end, so I'll invite Ezekiel up.
Good evening. Hello, everyone.
I'm just going to get your presentation up real quick.
I like your slide background.
Oh, thank you. I got to thank Microsoft for suggesting.
We've got animations, too.
Massachusetts got messed up. All right.
That used to drive me crazy when I would make a presentation and I'd come here and present it and it would look different.
It would look totally different once you get there.
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, so slide change, just let me know because we're going to try to keep up in front of me. All right, so we have the FY twenty-four unaudited year-end financials. The second slide, we have just a table of contents. We'll be going over revenue overview, there's five-year comparison, revenues by category, expenditure overview, expenditures, five-year comparison, budget versus actuals by department, and just some other reports I'll go over quickly. I won't go into details. Trust funds, OPEB, and special revenue funds. All right, first slide.
Well, before you start, just for, as a disclaimer, only because this clearly catches my eye, for those people at home watching this on the screen.
Sure.
Our finance director did not choose those fonts. Those fonts are just because they're unavailable on whatever the displaying computer is. So just in case somebody's saying like, what in the world? Who uses Courier?
Yeah. I already leaned over.
I'm like, looking at that, I'm like, oh my God.
Kind of looks like a ransom note.
Yeah, wow.
Good font recognition, by the way.
Good eyesight.
Well, I'm in that field, so that's why it catches my eye like immediately.
Yeah, it's like the original font.
All right, so we have total revenues collected, forty-eight point three-nine million, achieving a hundred and one point four percent of the budget projection. Investment income was a standout at four hundred fourteen thousand, which is four hundred eighty-four percent of a projection showcasing excellent returns. This is, you know, apparent of the current market that we're in right now.
So there was nothing we did. This is just because the market is doing.
This is the market, it's just the way.
Wow, four hundred eighty-four percent, that's great.
All right, so next slide.
If we have questions, through the chair, if we have questions, should we hold them till the end?
Sure. No, you can go ahead and jump in.
Ezekiel, it's up to you.
So we do.
If you have questions throughout the presentation, you can ask, that's fine.
Yeah, I can jump right in.
Okay. So one of the things that, and I, it's, I'm looking at the revenue slide, strictly the revenue slide, but I, I, I've looked through this already, so I know it's coming up. One of the things, you know, we went through an override last year because we needed another million dollars. And then based on how much money we budgeted, it resulted in a, I believe, a two-point-five million dollar surplus. Is that roughly correct?
Two-point-two free cash, yes.
Yep. So had we not have done that override, we would have had a one-point-two million dollars.
Correct.
Which would have been consistent with the previous years.
Correct.
So when you're noting that the revenue collected is, is one-point-four percent above the projected revenue, is, is this getting into that surplus? What is, what's the dollar value, I guess, of one-point-four percent? I can probably do the math here.
So on the next slide, we have the comparison by year. But the, but if you look at the actual year-to-date budget, and I can actually give you the detail.
Okay.
At another time, I'd include the actual detailed budget. This is more of an overview presentation. But the budgeted revenue, I think the previous town manager had always mentioned the projections were conservative. So I think it's consistent that year over year, we collect more revenue based than what we budgeted for. So if you look at the next slide, which is the five-year comparison on here, you will see the budget versus actuals and then the previous years and then the, the comparison, the variances. So other than fiscal year twenty-three, there's been a surplus every year. So that goes with my previous statement that the typical budget cycle in Lunenburg, it seems in the past, has been extremely conservative, which I think coming into this new cycle, maybe that could be adjusted to be more, reflect more actual. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Well, you'd have to talk to the pros and cons of doing that, which there are both. So before we say, we wanted to get right on the penny.
Yes.
We'd want to know what are the risks and what are the rewards if we're doing and not doing that.
Correct, correct. So that's why, you know, like I said, we could start the conversation, how to get closer, but I wouldn't do a based on comparison based on last year because a lot of things change year over year. But you can certainly, certainly look at the trend and try to project out.
Yeah.
Something a little bit closer to the target.
Yeah, I, I think my comment on this one is just, you know, it's, it's, from a resident viewpoint, you know, as we look through these finances and as people at home are digesting what this means, I don't think it's lost on anyone, you know, especially when they get their new tax bills. And we heard that it's going to be a roughly four hundred twenty-seven dollar increase on average per household. And then they see, well, the town had a surplus of, you know, a couple of million dollars, you know. You know, I, I think in some of this, we have to kind of, as, as we get the information, I'm asking the question. So that way it gets out there in the public that, you know, we engage in this conservative budgeting process because anything could happen in a fiscal year. We can suddenly lose revenue. Things, we can have a pandemic. You know, anything could occur. And, and so despite the conservative budgeting processes or, or in light of it, you know, it's important for us to maintain that or we've historically maintained that, and that's why we're in a situation where, you know, we're not willing to tap into that too heavily.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
No.
Let's see. Next slide is receipts by category. Here, we have local receipts. Again, upper form estimated by a hundred twenty-four percent, six-point-nine-four million collected. Student department revenue exceeded projections, two hundred forty-nine percent. Investment income again is a standout. We have state aid, ninety-six percent of estimates with full funding for chapter seventy and unrestricted local government aid. With the state aid, that could be a timing issue as well as we close out fiscal year twenty-four in June. They still had some items to be paid in July, which flowed into the next year. So it's a hundred percent is just the timing of when the fiscal year closed. Any questions? Here, I just have a.
I think I'm a little lost on what slide we're on.
Sure.
You were mentioning state aid, so I went up to the revenue state aid slide. Are we there before expenditures or?
I thought we were still on the slide with receipts by category.
It was the local receipts here.
Is that slide duplicated, the local receipts by category?
No, there's a continued slide.
It continues, so.
Some of them.
Uh, let's see.
Some of them, I think. Some of the categories repeat, actually.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's repeated in there. Yeah.
I'm looking at the, what slide is this? Five and seven.
Five and seven. It's a duplicate. I think it is a duplicate.
Okay, I didn't get that.
That's, that's my mistake. Sorry.
Although.
It's not a complete.
The percent.
Well, the numbers are different.
Is different.
So let me.
Slide five has hundred and one point four percent in the bottom rate, which is percent collected, I think.
There's, there's more.
So slide five, sorry, slide five is all receipts by category.
Uh huh.
Slide seven is the local receipts by category. So slide five includes the local receipts, but it has everything else.
Right.
So slide seven is just the local receipts separated out, so they're not duplicates, sorry.
Okay.
The laptop screen is small, so it's.
Okay.
Probably together, yeah.
Ah, okay.
Does that make sense?
I.
Okay.
Think, although, I guess some of them just are all local receipts because the numbers are this.
Yeah, the majority are. So with that being said, we have the local receipts. Here we have just a, next slide, we have just an overview. Total receipts collected, six-point-nine million, department revenue schools, it just, restating what I previously said. Investment income, motor vehicle excise has exceeded a hundred thirteen percent. State assessments at fifty-one percent, penalties and interest at a hundred point nine percent. The miscellaneous not recurring, it's a hundred eighty-nine point one percent.
Do you know what that is?
What?
Miscellaneous not recurring.
This is, well, this is, this will up again.
The miscellaneous not recurring, so it depends on what's happening through the fiscal year. So it's not the same every year. I tried going back to FY, the budget task force, so it's by fifteen, sixteen. I had to dig in more deep, but for this year in particular, it includes like, things like, like any new construction, if there's a sale of bonds, any investment income that's unrealized gain goes into that category.
It's still in that two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Range.
No, it was like, that was what the estimate was, but the actual was four hundred and seven thousand for miscellaneous not recurring.
Yeah.
Next slide, we have.
You're a slide ahead of me.
That's the local receipts broken out, we were just talking about. And then the next slide, we have the total revenue. So this here is just the state aid. Total state aid collected, ten-point-two million, state or land, seventy, at ninety-nine percent. Chapter seventy, hundred percent. Charter tuition at seventy-six percent and unrestricted at a hundred percent. So that charter tuition is that, that gap is that timing piece that needs to be, that we receive in July. However, it's, it's FY twenty-four income anticipated.
So a hundred percent here means a hundred percent of what we estimated.
Estimated, right.
Yeah. Those are pretty targeted based on, because the state sends out a cherry sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
So those are pretty much straight on. All right, next slide. It's same as the previous slide.
Before, before, go ahead.
Oh, sure.
Well, on this slide, actually.
Sure.
I see at the very bottom is where smart growth got zeroed out because we didn't get any last year. Do you know, are we applying? Do we have any indication about whether our eligibility is to get that reinstated this year?
We did apply this year, this coming. I haven't heard back as if it would be awarded, but we went through the process with the assessors for the application that they go through. That was, I want to say, early October.
Early October.
Yeah, since October, yeah.
Thank you.
Did we apply, I mean, I know that we understood that we didn't get the money last year, but did we apply last year?
Oh, yeah. It got denied.
Yeah.
Because of some, again, some formula thing that nobody can explain.
You know, that was my understanding as well. I was just asking if Ezekiel had any different knowledge on that.
I don't know about the last year, but, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions before we move on to expenditures? All right, so we have total expenditures through fiscal year twenty-four, forty-six million, forty-six million, four hundred sixty-three thousand. Ninety-six point seven percent of the target total remaining was one-point-five million. Actual expenditures were one-point-seventy-eight percent less than fiscal year twenty-three. And here we, the next slide, we have the five-year comparison by year and the changeover by fiscal year.
So just so I'm clear in how I'm reading this.
Sure.
Budget-wise, we've increased the budget year over year, but the difference between fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four is that we actually expended less money in fiscal year twenty-four than we did in fiscal year twenty-three.
Correct.
That was largely, if I, if I had guessed, because that was, that was the year of the tax issue and we had one-point-five million dollars less to spend that year.
Yeah, there were, this past year, fiscal year twenty-four, total, total abatements process for the closeout, I don't have it in here, but it's two hundred fifty-five thousand compared to the actual average is a hundred fifty. So there's actually an extra hundred thousand abated properties for fiscal year twenty, twenty-three compared to the average between twenty-four and twenty-one. And those, that's the tax issue there.
Yeah, I thought that number was closer to one-point-three million.
Well, the total, no, in FY twenty-three, it's one-point-four million.
Got it.
But in FY twenty-four, it's two hundred fifty-five thousand. So if you take out the outlier, the average is a hundred fifty thousand.
Got it.
So here, next slide, we have the budget versus actuals by department. Departments, you know, they knew it was a tight year this year, so there's, they were conservative, conservative in their spending.
I assume a lot of us also, sorry to cut.
I assume a lot of this also, sorry to cut you off, the salaries too, for...
Salaries too, I was just gonna say, there were a lot of vacancies this year, which led to the, to the cost savings, you would say. I don't anticipate, as we backfill, um, positions going forward. Um, let's see. Let's see, so, um, some key highlights here, we have the reserve fund, uh, remaining balance at thirty-five thousand. Building department salaries, you'll see it's eighty-nine percent utilization because of the staffing. One area of target, I have a particular concern, you may not see this in the overview, just the fire department salaries. They're, the overtime utilization, they may, may or not need another position, that's just by looking at the overtime. I'm just concerned of burnout, but that's beyond my, my role, you can see it in the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
All right, to that point, my understanding is that, you know, we run the department, fire department with, uh, um, three two-day shifts with a per diem day. So what you're saying is that looking at the overtime budget, given how high it is, and I know it's high, is that if there was an additional staff member, not necessarily on shift, but available, that that would probably be more cost-effective than continuing in the overtime trend.
And it might be beneficial to the staff as well, who are constantly being called in.
Well, that's been, that's been clearly signaled to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they've, yeah, they've been very clear about communicating that they want to hold another shift added, but it seems as if, you know, there's a need for conversation about something that's cost-effective, you know?
Maybe the start of that conversation could be the reduction of overtime.
Could be what, sorry, I missed that.
Could be the reduction of the overtime, could be the start of that conversation of possibly adding another shift, because the cost would just flip to the actual person instead of, um, overbearing the staff.
Roughly, I mean, in dollars, do you roughly know how much money we're talking about in overtime expenditures?
Um, I don't have the detail to that level in front of me, but I can certainly send you that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're talking about FY twenty-five year-to-date, or twenty-four?
Twenty-four, closeout.
For, I know we are overall, but we're talking about burnout and overtime is still continuing into this year.
Correct, so...
Yeah.
All right, um, let's see. So again, as we look through these, next slide, it's trust funds, but just one more thing about the departments. Just as we look at the next budget fiscal cycle, again, have the departments look at their, their shortages instead, whether if they've had staffing needs, if they've had positions that were vacant, um, look at the overtime, you know, public safety in particular, but just kind of take a closer look at that, maybe, I don't know what's been done in previous years, but just, I would take a deep dive to see what the needs are.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Lost my position here. All right. Any questions before we move on to trusts? All right, so these report, reports here, the trust reserve and other funds are come from, directly from Barcelumio, um, are holding these reports, I did not build directly from them. So you can see here, um, on slide fourteen, you'll see our stabilization fund balances. We have our regular stabilization fund at two point nine million, I'm sorry, two point nine million, who, uh, we've received a sixty-six thousand, um, gain. We also have a sewer, capital reserve, our health insurance, and our OPEB stabilization fund balances, they all seem pretty healthy at this point, given the market as well.
I have a question on the trust funds.
Sure.
So in a couple of minutes, we're gonna hear a presentation from the Budget Task Force, and one of their requests is gonna be related to the consolidation of, of some of these. So my question is, um, you know, when we, when I, when I work with the library trustees to be able to get engaged in, you know, managing their own investments, one of the things that came up was that they needed to kind of look through every single fund that was created, um, and what the parameters or restrictions were on them. So, you know, as we look at this, I mean, you know, several of these funds, you know, stabilization funds are, you know, created by the town, but when we look at some of the other funds that are here, the conservation, scholarship, miscellaneous, um, do we have restrictions on these funds in terms of how the money is intended to be invested that would conflict with consolidation, or that would conflict with the prudent investor?
Um, so for example, you have the cemetery funds, they're, they each have their master general law behind them, conservation funds as well, they, you'd have to look deeply into the bequests depending on what the trust is set up for, the same thing with the scholarship as well. Looking back at the scholarships, you may be able to consolidate, consolidate those depending on if they have a similar, um, mission for each one. But that's more conversation with the school department, I wouldn't have that kind of information. Looking at the miscellaneous funds, I'm sure we can consolidate those. Actually, don't know exactly what they are for, I just know the numbers behind, but we, I had actually had a conversation with our, um, treasure collector about possibly consolidating with the meetings from the Budget Task Force. You know, we were waiting, we had agreed upon waiting for the new town manager to come aboard to update our fiscal, um, our investment policy in order to consolidate those funds. We can certainly look at, um, banks who have a better interest rate and try to get everything consolidated as much as possible. I think it'll be easier and more streamlined for everybody as well.
Yeah, I, I think what I heard from the library comparatively, they were in this model where the funds were being invested by the town, and rather than getting two point thirty-three percent, I think last year they got like sixteen, or fifteen, or sixteen percent. So it's pretty substantial, um, you know, and, and it's a really good request, we haven't heard it formally, but we will soon. But I think it's just important to note, you know, what are the restrictions, because it sounds great, but if someone bequeathed, you know, some monies to the town and said, you know, but it must be, you know, I don't know how people bequeath typically, but I just, I understand that, we can work with the library, some people do put restrictions on how they want the money to be grown.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question about stabilization funds. Don't we have a, a capital state, special stabilization fund?
A special purpose?
A special purpose, yes, that's in here, we keep that, it's a regular, one of our other bank accounts that's managed within our general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
That's not separated out.
Just misleading because it says stabilization funds?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Do you have an idea of how much is in there, just out of curiosity, since we're...
I don't have the number in front of me, I can, I can pull it up.
Between one point seven and two million dollars, I think.
Nope. Uh, next slide is our OPEB trust fund, our sewer and OPEB valuation, so current market value for OPEB is one point four million, and the sewer is at five thousand. Five million, sorry.
How much do we contribute to OPEB each year?
Um...
What percent is it?
Depending on what's the retained earnings on the sewer, I don't have that, but I can absolutely get that as well. I can provide a follow-up report to the board. And the next slide, I don't plan on going over these numbers in particular, the special revenue funds. You can see all the revolver funds and grants and things like that that we have. This is more of a request that came from, from the Finance Committee to include those numbers. So if you have any particular questions, you know, as you look through these, I don't know if you already have, but I can address those. I will say, in here, we have the FEMA COVID funds, currently in deficit by thirty-six thousand. I think that was overspent a couple of years ago, that this did not come out of our free cash, we're not the only community. DLS had published a report out saying that a lot of communities have an overage in this account. So typically, if you have an overage of your special revenue funds, it comes off of your free cash balance calculation. This line in particular, I highlighted it out, um, this thirty-six thousand did not come off of our free cash, but we'll have to address it at some point. It's not money that will go away, so how that, we'll have to talk about that at a later date.
Let them ask for it when they need it.
Yeah, just let it sit there.
That's a lot of special revenue funds, wow.
Yeah, we have, there's a lot of accounts, there's a revolving accounts, there's a lot of grants, there is, you know, a lot of special accounts, you know, police, fire, detail, custodians, emergency preparedness, things like that as well. So, with that being said, again, our free cash was at two point two seven million, and our tax rate has been approved at fourteen thirty-six, fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents.
I do have a question. So we had estimated because of the, what we had not expended to be like one point five million, but our free cash came in at two point three million.
Yeah.
That's not change that comes out of the sofa.
No.
So how did we not calculate that by the tune of eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, that's my mistake when I was projecting out the calculation, my first year doing this, I just, I missed a line.
That's fine.
And part of the calculation, I corrected it going forward, so we get a closer...
I just wanted to make sure that, if you, if you're aware of it, good, that...
Yeah, that was, that was my calculation, I had been giving out the one point seven or one point...
One point five.
One point five number, and that was just me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, no questions, but Ezekiel, I think you've really grown into this role. I think, you know, what I hear from many elected officials and staff is that, you know, you've made yourself available to kind of resolve some, some conflicts, and you've really, you know, just stepped in the role, and, and I think you've been the person we needed, the community needed. So I just want to thank you, uh, for the work that you've done, for having, you know, you have a good team downstairs.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think the morale in your department seems to be, you know, improving. I think your assistant is great.
Yes, yes.
So I just want to thank you and your team for the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I second that Ezekiel.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I enjoy working with you, and I know you're doing a great job.
All right, thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks Ezekiel.
You too.
All right, up next, we have a joint meeting with the Budget Task Force for a status update and executive summary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to address the committee, but first I'd like to compliment Michael Ray Jeffries on getting the memo about sweaters.
I have a purple one that's really similar to that.
So, first of all, I just want to thank Renee for having the idea to do this and getting everybody organized. One of the things that's nice is when Renee says, can somebody volunteer, there's like a line of people, so...
You were kind of voluntold.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
As was Ezekiel.
There's a lot of people that told me we should do this, but anyway. One of the things that I, I take away from this is the fact that there are a lot of people in town who really care, and that's an important thing. If there aren't people that care, if there aren't people that are willing to work hard, if there aren't people that are willing to volunteer their time after their workday ends, none of this would have happened. In particular, the people that work at the school, Dr. Burnham, Dr. Gilson, Ezekiel, Carter, they were really helpful. People from the union were super helpful. Mary Foil, um, and Brad McNamara, and Christos all gave us really good insightful information. The assessor, the assessor was incredibly helpful in explaining arcane bits of municipal law and taxes, but all the volunteers were just really, really great, they were willing to chip in. So that's, that's the good news. The bad news is that I think that the town has some real financial issues on the horizon, and if we don't deal with them, they will cause critical problems in the town. The three things that stood out to us as we went through this process as problems were the limitations placed on us in terms of raising revenue by Prop two and a half, the vacancies in town caused by a lack of competitive employment compensation packages, and then what could only be described as a morass of arcane processes and procedures for town accounting. Some of the stuff that happened was like just, it's like mystifying, like, I, I couldn't even explain how it would go about, but one of the things that Carter pointed out, and I think it's helpful to have Carter's insights here because he's seen it from town to town to town, is that we have this really complex set of, uh, really complex chart of accounts. And, you know, like, I run my own business, and like, the chart of accounts is where we start, and if we don't have a handle on that, then it's hard to figure out how much we're paying out. The other thing that was really problematic was there are certain things that just sort of appear and then disappear without any explanation for like where they came from or where they went to. And it's not small stuff. One of the things that Renee found when we were going through this is that there's this generically titled, non-recurring miscellaneous revenue, and sometimes it was three hundred thousand dollars, and then sometimes it was zero, and it just went away. And we, we can't really get a good explanation of like where it came from, what it was, and why it stopped. And that's all really, really deeply disconcerting. The Prop two and a half stuff is probably the most important thing, and I think it just shows that we're sort of up against the wall, because at the time that we are looking at, like the last four or five years, inflation has been really high, and inflation has actually outstripped what we could possibly raise because of limitations placed on us by Prop two and a half. And so what's happening is, in real spending dollar sense, we're actually reducing funding for the town at a time when the costs are going up. So, you know, two and a half percent increase when the rate of inflation is one point two three percent, which it was in two thousand twenty, that's fine, but the next year it was four point seven percent, eight percent, four point two percent. The projection for this year is that it's gonna be somewhere above, uh, two point seven percent. If we can't even keep pace with inflation, then we are in real sense, spending less when everything is costing more, and that just doesn't work. The other thing that came to our attention is the fact that the safety valve that a lot of communities use, uh, some of them are comparable towns, but oftentimes it was towns that were more affluent than we are. We don't use the safety valve, which is an override. So for example, when we're looking at comparable towns, the town of Weston uses an override, I think every year for like the past ten or fifteen years, and I understand we are not Weston, but going the other way and essentially having it happen only twice in, you know, the past thirty years, means that we kind of have made a deal with the devil in terms of funding because of inflation. We are spending real dol, less real dollars, and everything is costing more, and the only way out of it that the state law provides, we're not taking it. And, and that's a, that's a real problem. All of the proposals that we've come up with, and there are twenty, not twenty-one, there was a typo, all of the proposals we've, we've gathered together, some of them will generate money, some of them will save us money, some of us, some of them will help defray costs that we're going to incur anyway, but it does not, and this is my opinion, not the opinion of the Budget Task Force, does not seem to me that we will be able to make up the gap that we need to make up for. And that leads to the second problem, which is our competitive, our, our open positions because of a lack of competitive compensation packages. We are not paying people in town enough for what they do. And if we continue to do that, they will leave because they can go someplace else and do the same job for more money. And then that starts another cycle of people who are not qualified or necessarily experienced in doing this job, being forced to stretch to cover the new tasks that are now vacant because people have gone someplace else, and they get overworked, they are underpaid, and then they will leave. If you've looked, if you look at the, the memo, it has a bunch of people that we're missing. The town finance director and town accountant we're missing, the land use director, the principal assessor... principal assessor, the conservation administrator, the facilities director, the DPDW director, the school business manager. These are critical positions in every town. These are people that help make sure that taxpayers' dollars are well-used and watched carefully, and they are not there. If we do not have the people manning these positions, then we are essentially not doing what we are supposed to do with the money we are given from the taxpayers. We need those people there, and we are not paying them enough to retain them. So for example, when Mike Cassidy left the school as the school business manager, he left for a town that was, it was not in our comparables in terms of DESI, but it would have been in our comparables in terms of the town comparisons, because the two comp lists were, one generated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and then another one generated to compare municipalities. It was not in our comp for DESI because it was too small, but it was in our comp for the town. He left for a position that basically paid the same as our superintendent, even though it was one step down on the ladder. Another sign that we have like real problems, prior to the current CBA being signed, if you looked at the DESI comps, our teachers were either last or second to last in every, every important step along the way in terms of longevity. There was one place where we did really well, which is a teacher that's hired for their first year that has no experience and does not have any additional education. That position, because of the requirements that DESI imposes on teachers, is almost never filled. You will have like one or two of those a year. Because teachers now have to get advanced degrees after five years, it's just, it's almost like, you know, the one place we did well was a place that no one ever gets hired into. All of that means that we've got a po, problem from the funding part, a problem from the people running town government part, but then when you get to the actual part of how you administer things in town government, it is really, really difficult to make sense of things. As I mentioned, the chart of accounts problem that Carter pointed out, that seems like a major issue. The way in which we use Munis strikes me as crazy. The Munis version that we have is no longer supported by, I mean, you all know this, no longer supported by updates, and it is currently on a server as opposed to the cloud. If the server goes down, or something else goes down, the software goes down, we can't make it work, which is why we are so, we are like, we're, we're fighting to fix the computer at the same time that we're trying to close the books, and that, those two things can't really happen at the same time. We do not have a standardized way of town departments reporting their financials, and so it's hard to really compare apples to oranges, and it's also difficult to process. If you're somebody who is new on the job and you get a report from the police department and then a report from the Department of Public Works, and they don't look or sound similar at all, it's hard to figure out like how, like, whose house is really on fire and who's doing fine? If they're not the same, we can't do that. The other thing that we noticed is that there is a lot of extra work that's being done. So for example, when you have a purchase order for the school, it must first get approved by the school business manager, and then it is shipped up to town where people in town also approve it, and then it's shipped back to the school business manager. This is like three times more effort than is needed and at least twice as many people as needed. And so there's a lot of things that we could do to consolidate those roles and mean, and that would mean that even if there were gaps in, in critical positions, we would, we wouldn't have people doing all of this extra work, which then stretches them out too much and makes them want to leave. So all of these things are sort of tied together, and, you know, one of the things I learned when I first started working was, in small organizations like town government, when I worked at the Public Defender, attrition causes more attrition, and I think we're at that point where because we don't have the funding, we don't have the employment packages, and then they don't have the employment packages, people leave, and because so many people are leaving, all of these things that should be standardized in terms of town finance are just catch as catch can. And so instead of going back and figuring out whether this vendor belongs under this category in the chart of accounts, they just create a new one. Or instead of figuring out how to do this process according to, you know, best practices, they just say, well, I'm going to look at it, you'll look at it, and then we'll both decide. And it's just not something that is conducive to efficient government. And so to that end, we had twenty recommendations, two of which have already have been approved by town meeting, so we had proposed them, and then they got approved before we could actually conclude. The number one thing that we had talked about, and the ranking is based on, you know, the amount of revenue, the amount of need, and then like how easy is it to implement? The number one recommendation is to consolidate town count, town accounts. When we looked at it, at the Budget Task Force, it was stunning. It was not like we have one or two or five or ten, we had dozens of accounts, some with like a dollar in them, some of which were earning no money at all in interest. It was as if the town had decided to put a bunch of money in Folgers cans and just store them in the basement. Like, that's all we were doing. We were not using any of the features of actually having a bank hold our money. And so one of the things that we talked about, and this has got to be, it's got to be something that we do, because we're losing money by not doing it, is we've got to consolidate those accounts and make sure that we do so in a way that provides the highest yield. When we talked to the people in, that advised the town on investments, they talked to us about the prudent investor rule. And when the prudent investor rule was adopted last month, it seems like this is a great time, because we're going to have to reexamine all of these things, and while we're doing that, let's put all of our money in places that make more money, because right now, we are not doing that, and it makes no sense. It's just, it's, like I said, it's the equivalent of putting them in Folgers cans downstairs. The second thing that we talked about, and this is a cost, this is not going to save us any money, but it is clear to me, I think it's clear to Renee, Izzy also agrees, Carter, I think agrees as well, we need to have a more thorough audit than what is done on an annual basis. There are certain things that like no amount of work or attention can figure out. They are just inscrutable parts of our books that for some reason, we just tolerate it, and I, I don't know why we would do that. You know, Renee's missing three hundred thousand dollars, seems like a pretty good sign that there are things that we are missing. And if we are going to eventually go to the taxpayer and ask them to either do, adopt the CPA, which I'll get to in a second, or override, I think we owe it to them to make sure that we have, you know, done the accounting equivalent of checking every one of the couch cushions. Right now, I don't think we can say that. So I, that's something that would be a cost, but it is, it is our number two priority, and it would be number one, but the, the first thing, consolidating accounts is free, so we should just do that. It's free money. This one is, i- in terms of importance, is second only to that, and it's only second because the other one, like I said, is literally free money. We need to make sure, number three recommendation is implementation of the prudent investor rule. That was passed at town meeting. It could generate a substantial amount of money, and while it is not as risk-free as the consolidation of accounts, the prudent investor rule is not like, go have some, you know, math guys bet on stuff at Vegas. It's still pretty conservative. I mean, it's more liberal than what the old rule was, but it is a reliable way to generate more money, and not implementing it correctly could cost us a lot of money. We do have a lot of money in these accounts. I mean, I think Carter had mentioned last night, it was something like twenty-seven to thirty million dollars. We should be able to generate some real interest in that if we use the prudent investor rule tools. The fourth one is one that we've talked, that the town has talked about before, but I think it is clear, after going through the Budget Task Force process and talking to each different group of people that have some connection with the town, whether it was the building people, or it was the assessor, or it was the unions, that we need another lever to try to generate revenue, and the lever that is, the state gives us besides property tax is the CPA. And the CPA does a bunch of different things that I think align with what the town needs. We are going to spend an enormous amount of money on Ritter, on this building, on dealing with the building stock in general, and we're going to do that one way or the other. The CPA would just allow us to recoup some of that cost. The levers that it gives us are much more finely tuned than other levers, I'll get to the split tax rate in a minute, but it gives us the ability to set exemptions, to set floors, so that, you know, we're not hitting seniors too hard. One of the things that Dave Passio said at our very first meeting was, you need to figure out a way to do this and do this equitably, and the CPA really fits the bill in terms of doing this equitably. Because we can set the surcharge, we don't have to, you know, wallop people with a big increase. Because we can control what exemptions there are, we can make sure that it's tuned to prevent the impact from being disproportionate for one group of people, which we can't do with a split tax rate. And I'll get to that in a second, this is like the one place I'm going to rant. The CPA will help us with Marshall Park, it will help us with the building stock, and I think that, you know, having affordable housing is a laudable goal no matter what. And those are the three things that it would require us to spend money on. Since we're going to do two of those things anyway, we may as well try to get some of that money back. One of the fifth recommendation was pursuing green grants for the HVAC installs at the primary school and the Turkey Hill. Those can generate real money, and it will be money that we get back on something we're going to do anyway. If you look at the information that was presented five years ago, when I joined school committee, the number of days that are air-conditioned days is increasing dramatically every year. It is not going down, and these, primary school especially, it's bad because it was built with the idea of having air conditioning, and then the town cheaped out and didn't do it. So we have the worst of both worlds. We do not have windows that open and allow for lots of ventilation because they wanted to build it with air conditioning in mind, but then we didn't put in the air conditioning. So it just, it's not a great building without air conditioning, and these green grants would allow us to recapture some of the money we would spend. Anna Lockwood, one of the two citizens that made comments, brought forward an idea that I believe that, Michael, you had talked about regarding the leasing the land, the solar, leasing the land for the town dump to a solar provider. That could generate real money. If you look at the towns that have done this, it is real money, and as long as we are simply leasing and not building, we do not assume any of the maintenance. It's basically just a way to collect money. Building on that and getting the permits, that will be complicated, but if we have a private entity do that, then we don't inherit anywhere near as much of the risk or the cost. We'd also talked about putting lots on the school parking lot, this would probably have to be done differently. If we could find a private party that would be willing to do that, that might work, but it's, it may be that the town would have to do that. Fitchburg, my understanding is that they are doing this right now in, I forget, I think it's the high school, but they're doing this, if you drive into Boston, you'll notice that they did the same thing for the parking lots for MCI Cedar Junction. It is something that has a lot of benefits in terms of generating these credits, which is not a one-to-one equivalence with money, but it will help us offset some of the costs. And at the same time, it will provide some covering, so like you don't have to shovel your car out in the middle of, in the middle of winter. The Brooks House lease, that was passed at town meeting. The hope is that that would be able to generate some revenue and at the same time save some costs, because we wouldn't be doing the maintenance. I think Carter's already presented this, did you present it last time, the town trash policy? My understanding is that when we adopted recycling, the recycling was free, and now it is a cost, and we at least need to tell the people in the town, you are, you are subsidizing this. We told, we told you at the start it was free and now it's not. Do you want to keep doing this? And whether or not it's worth it, I don't know, but I think that because it's such a large cost, we need to rethink whether or not we're doing it. We should make a conscious choice, one way or the other, either yes or no, but not talking about it and not deciding means that we're making the choice by fiat, and that never works well. There is a, a potential to recoup some money by declaring certain towns in the town, chapter, eligible for chapter ninety funding. I will be very candid, I tried to read the statute, I tried to listen, I have no idea what this means. I think it just means that like, there's maintenance that will be done, and if they qualifying roads, we can recoup some of the costs for the maintenance. Brian Leighton, the chair of the school committee, proposed an idea for a high deductible health plan. If anybody has a job, I'm sure you're aware of this. Basically, it's a way of getting a cheaper cost in your healthcare with the possibility that you might have to pay more as a deductible. If we can get the PEC to adopt that, there may be some younger people or some healthy, like health nut people that think that this is a good idea. I'm skeptical this will raise a lot of money, but at least having the option, there's no cost to having the option, and if one person takes it, it's a little bit of a savings. The other thing that we talked about in terms of health insurance, and this was brought to me, my attention by Mary Foil, was the current way in which we do health insurance buyouts is kind of baffling. In order to qualify, you have to first be in and then get out, and the amount of money you get paid to get out is like a pittance, and so it's strange that the town does it this way. Every private business that I know does not go to them, their new employees and say, please join, and then we'll kick you out. They just say, don't join and we'll bribe you not to, right? And that seems to be a very effective, market-based way to tell people, if you can get healthcare elsewhere, other way, in another place, do that instead of doing it here. The next two recommendations are both streamlining, these are not going to save us any money, they will save our employees' time. The payroll and purchasing goes back to the thing I talked about with the school and the town, and then the standardized workflow for town finances, this is also something I mentioned before, which is, the way in which we do our reporting just doesn't make a whole lot of sense, it's not consistent from place to place. We also need, we really need to have somebody go through and prune down our chart of accounts. It is really, like, I, I don't know what everybody does here, but when I sit down with my law partner and we go through our chart of accounts, which we do every single time we pay ourselves, we are scrupulous to make sure we're not adding new things, because when you add new things, it becomes very difficult to figure out what you're actually spending. You know, if you're paying, you know, ten pennies out to ten people, that's one thing. If you're paying ten pennies out to a hundred different people, it just becomes very, very difficult. So we need to have a better workflow in terms of our finances. The sixteenth recommendation is something the school committee is already doing. We're undertaking a review of the solar contracts. They are up this year, and they were not as productive as we hoped, and so we're trying to figure out if there's a way to leverage the solar panels we have and get a new lease and not adopt them as town properties so that we have to do maintenance and upkeep. The next two recommendations are very similar, they're to create a review process for school fees and town fees. We have not raised town, uh, school fees in a very, very long time, like pre-pandemic, and the fees are really just to make certain projects and activities and teams self-sustaining. No one's getting rich on the athletic fees or the activity fees. We're basically just trying to give the people who do the coaching and do the management of, you know, the theater projects, just give them a little bit more money as, you know, it, they're almost always either people who are teachers in the district or teachers elsewhere that have kids in the district, and so helping make sure that they're compensated means that we keep having all of these activities for kids to participate in. One of the things that the school committee I think is most proud of is that we have like fifty percent participation at the high school level in some kind of activity or sport. In a small town, when you have fifty percent participation, that means when you graduate, you're going to know everybody in your class. You know, when my son did the float this year, he met a bunch of people that he had never met because he's a runner, and so now he knows, you know, three times as many people. And I, I'm, I'm certain by the time he graduates, he will have had some substantive interaction with everybody in his class, and those connections are really, really valuable. So increasing the activity fee helps make that possible, and that is a really, really good thing for the town. Same thing is true with town fees, we need to create a process to regularly review them, we just don't have this mechanism. One of the things that helps in the school district is that we can tie the fees to the free lunch status, and that's a way to like make it more parsimonious when you distribute the cost. I don't know how the town would do that, but we need to have some regular review of fees, if for no other reason than to do what Carter said last night, which is just to give people a heads up, like, this is going to be more expensive next year, or it's, this, you know, like this fee is going to happen and please budget for it. If we don't do it on an annual basis, it just tends to get left on the back burner, and it's never going to be a ton of money, but if it's a little bit of money distributed equitably. And it's never going to be a ton of money, but if it's a little bit of money distributed equitably, that's ultimately the best thing that we could offer you as a recommendation. Carter had an idea about warrant delivery, and in thinking through how we did this at school committee the last two years, I think it's just something that we absolutely have to do. His proposal is basically to make it so that the warrant is delivered electronically, and then if you need a print copy, you can come and get one. And this does two things. Number one, it reduces the cost because there won't be as many printings and mailings. But it also means that we don't have to put the date for all of the proposals to be so early. You know, I think that when we send it out to the printer, it has to be six weeks before town meeting. And unfortunately, six weeks before May town meeting is awfully close to the day in which everybody gets healthcare information. And then all the committees in town have to process the impacts of the healthcare information on their budget and then get their warrants out in a really, really short time span. This past year, when the town, when the school committee did this, it was really, really close. We had everything done for the budget for probably two or three meetings, and we were just waiting on that nugget of bad news or good news from the healthcare people. And without the pressure that we have because it needs to go to printer, we'd get like two more weeks, maybe three more weeks. And essentially, everybody would get one more meeting, and we'd have that information more processed and more digested before we go in front of the town and ask them to spend money. The next one was to consolidate town and school snow removal and ground maintenance. I know this has been proposed a couple of different times. One of the concerns that Dr. Burnham had brought up was, because this happens, especially in the morning, simultaneously, it's unlikely to save any money in terms of people, right? Because if you have, let's just say for really simplistic example, you have two people doing snow removal on the roads. And then you have four people doing snow removal, or three people doing snow removal at each of the schools. It's not like you're going to be able to get rid of those three people at the school and put them on the roads because they're going to have to be doing it, like I said, especially in the morning, at the same time. So if there is some possibility of a savings, it would have to be in just, you know, having one less department head or whatever. But I don't think we're going to have a huge savings from this. I also think, and this is something that as parent I think about, I think that parents might get a little grumpy, especially if, because we're trying to do all this stuff with one department at the same time, we have, instead of cancellations, we have like one or two hour delays. Like, one or two hour delays are just horrible. They're the worst. Like, the kids are grumpy because they thought they're getting a whole day off. The parents are grumpy because they have to go in late to work. And so I'm really hesitant to think that this one is going to be a great recommendation, but I think it's worth talking about and running the numbers. And then the last one is the split tax rate, which I think is just, I, I, I can't see how it's going to work. We do not have the industrial base, the commercial base to make it work. Especially when there are no levers to pull on the business side. You have the world's largest corporation, the largest corporation in history in town, and it will be taxed at the same rate as the place where I get my inspection sticker that has like three employees. If there was more nuance to the split tax rate and we could tax more to bigger companies, it might be worth it. But the savings, I think Carter did the numbers, the savings were just really minuscule for residents, and it was a punch in the gut for every business. I, you know, like, if we could touch, if we could make Walmart pay all our taxes, I'd be super happy. But that isn't going to happen. And so at, at this point, you know, we put it in there because we did a lot of work. Evan created a wonderful, like, sabermetric quality presentation about all the numbers. And no matter how we crunched it, we just couldn't get it to the point where it would be worthwhile. We need either, we either need to have more businesses or we need to have more nuance in the way in which we can oppose business taxes. When we met the assessor board, it was very clear from them that there was nothing we could do. They're just going to get taxed the same percentage no matter what. And if that's the case, I just, I can't see it being worthwhile, but I put it in there so that we would have it. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take questions. I will tell you, do not ask me about chapter 90. I have no idea.
Well, thank you so much. I mean, this was so thorough in the, the amount of recommendations here and how you formatted all of it. It's really great. So thank you for this report. Renee, you can start if you want.
Well, I want to start by thanking Tony. He was a fantastic, amazing chair. Did so much work. Ezzy, you don't even know how, I mean, I, I sent an email to Ezzy on Sunday asking a question, not expecting a response. I think it was 10 minutes and I got a response. Same thing with Dr. Burnham, Dr. Gilson. Carter was involved, Heather was involved in the beginning, and, and Evan did a lot of his Evan thing. That we all know Evan's good at doing. So I just, it, it was five months, like, exactly, basically. And I just, I mean, so many people gave so many, so much time and effort to, to look in this. And it's, I mean, I think we got done what we could get done, right? But, uh, yeah, I just wanted publicly, I thanked them last night, but I want to thank them again in this, in this form because Tony did, did a lot. That's it, everyone else, but Tony wrote the whole summary, basically.
Watch the one with the assessor, did a lot of ranting about Walmart. Drives me crazy.
There were some entertaining recordings out there, for sure.
I'll thank you for the effort and, and all the time because I know the time it takes to collate this and review this. And especially from people coming from all different walks of life that don't have the inner workings of the town government in mind. And to learn that is just a, a real steep incline, a greased, steep incline to begin with. So I, I thank you for that. I mean, I, I have to say that, you know, most of these, being a FinCom person and being on the board for many years, are not a surprise to me that they're on here. You know, if I had to summarize, because I, and, and please let me know if this is an accurate or inaccurate characterization. But the ultimate conclusion of your report is we don't take in enough money.
Correct.
And most of the money that we're looking to take in would be from residents.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Because that, right. And so this is something I've been flying for a long time. It's good to see a totally different board and a totally different committee look at this. But, you know, the prop two and a half structural problem.
It's a deal with the devil.
Yeah.
Like.
I've been saying, I've been saying, if, if we had recordings back then, I would say go see them because I've said it then, and I, I pushed for the two overrides that failed because I said the same thing. I pushed for two CPAs. I, I was part of the committees that tried to do that twice. So I feel for everything in here, believe me.
You know, I think that one of the things that, we've had like a shift in how we view taxes in this country. And I think that, you know, like if you look at like quotes about taxes from the turn of the 20th century, the 19th to the 20th century, you know, we've got, we have a lot of people, very smart people, you know, Oliver Wendell Holmes said the taxes are the price of civilization. And I think that we could use with less taxes. But I also think that more than less taxes, there needs to be some autonomy for municipalities. Like, we are basically given, you know, the scraps from the table by the state. And like, we're like tinkering around with like what percentage of scraps we get, but it's just scraps. You know, like if we had, the one thing that I think is just an abomination, and it's obviously a sign of the fact that, you know, politics is owned by business, that we cannot have a variation in the split tax rate dependent on the size of the corporation. Like, why on earth are we doing that? Why on earth are the people of this town, the people of this state, and the people of this country letting corporations set their own tax rates? It's crazy. We don't do that with people. It's, it's bananas. Sorry, that was my rant.
Well, that was not a rant, trust me.
That was not the rant, that I was just like crazy mad, but, you know.
What are you going to do?
Can I just add, I mean, the other things, so one, yes, we don't take in enough money, but there's, we've been missing out on opportunities to get money. The prudent investment, I mean, when you look at, at, at the investment revenue, like over time, we are way behind.
Everybody else.
Where other towns, like, yes, everyone had down years in, I think, 20 and 21, and then everyone bounced back, and Lunenburg's like down here. Like, you saw Ezzy's report tonight, what was it, 400%? And that was doing not, imagine if we had invested. So that was one, CPA was eye-opening for me. That's another way to get, to get money. And then the other eye-opener for me was, I mean, we've, no secret, we've had turnover. You know, Ezzy's been here less than a year, Dr. Gilson's been here maybe six months, I don't even know. I mean, turnover in key positions and coming in and, and trying to find things. I mean, the accounts that Ezzy's tried to look through and dig through, it's, we're asking questions and nobody sitting at the table knows the answer because the people who knew the answer are not in the building anymore.
Well, I mean, one of the things that, so like miscellaneous non-recurring. I mean, I've, I've asked for this for years and years. When, when something is presented as the budget, when, when the town manager puts together the budget, if there are things that are abnormal, like there was, there were times when health insurance got shifted from schools, outside of schools or back in schools, and they made a big difference on the line item. And I'm like, you gotta put a footnote to have a narrative, why this changed. Because in five years' time or seven years' time, somebody's going to look back at this, and everybody's going to change, and all the players and all the committees and all the employees are going to change. And exactly the question you're asking is going to be asked. Why did this happen? Way to $300,000 go for miscellaneous, non-recurring revenue. And I'm sure there's a reason, but nobody wrote down the reason because at the time that it was important, they knew it. But for posterity, for review, for analysis, no longer there. And it's very frustrating. I agree.
It is. It's about half a million dollars, dropped like a cliff in 2016, and it's been down. And that's why the financial, the, the audit.
Yeah, we've got to have somebody who knows how to.
Ranked so high because we're like.
Look at this.
Yeah, I think you guys did some really awesome work. I look at this, you know, from a couple of different lenses, both as a prior employee, as a resident, as a parent to kids in the school district. A lot of the things that you're coming up with, just thinking from my, my staff perspective, are things that a lot of us internally were advocating for a change for a long time that I'm not even sure ever really got outside of, of the internal staff. So it's great to see that a lot of these things are really being uncovered or being brought forward. You know, the charts of accounts, the, the different things that were happening have been known internally for a while at the lower levels. So it's, it's nice to see from that perspective that it's getting brought forward. You guys did an immense amount of work.
Did we do a good job in representing the problem?
I think you did a fantastic job.
Okay.
I think, no, I, I really think this is fantastic, and I've, I've watched not all, but most of you guys' meetings, and I think, you know, you guys have all done.
There were some very depressing meetings.
An immense amount of work here, and I, I think it's a great step forward. I like, you know, the plan. I don't really know how we move forward with all of these things. I think they're great suggestions. Obviously, as a resident, I'm a single mom, I have three kids. I don't want to see my taxes go up, but that's the reality. They have to. We have to look at overrides. We, you've already stated it all, but I'm in, in full agreement with the challenges that you brought up and with the plans that you've identified. So thank you so much for all of your work, Renee, and everyone else that has, that, you know, all the work you guys did is great, and.
It's edifying to know that the things that we found were things that people in the town government knew, right? Because if you come at it from two different directions and you end at the same spot, it's probably the right spot.
Yeah, yep.
So, thank you. That was helpful.
I agree with all the comments said previously. First, you know, I did catch a couple of your meetings. I think that the camaraderie that the membership had with each other was obvious and clear. It was, it was somewhat of an informal tone, and I think it really allowed you guys as a team to gel and then really kind of dig into a lot of these details. I really think that the product that you've presented tonight is excellent, and, and it's really clear. I think that, uh, sitting in this board, you know, I think the image from all the details that have come out over the last several months is very different than I think the picture that's been painted for the last several years. And so I think it's really good, as, as just noted by Selectman Moore. It's really good that some of these things, many of the things that are in here are things that were quietly known, but, but now are, are, you know, spoken out loud. I, I really want to highlight a couple of things that I think are positives here. The solar plan, I've been saying this before I ran for office, that this is a way to make money. You know, in my profession, we put solar panels up all the time because it offsets your electric bill. The, the most cost-effective way to do this is to actually buy the panels. You know, these companies that lease, they make money by being that middleman.
Sure.
And I did watch that meeting, and I was like, I really need to go to their next meeting and comment. I sent Selectman MQ a quick text message because we have a solar field. There's a solar field within my portfolio and we lease it out. And so I could get, get the comparative of what is it, what are we making when we're leasing it versus what are we making when it's, when we own it? It, it, when I would say it's, it's exponential, it's exponential. And, and the, the more money that gets made off of solar is when you make that initial capital investment, and then you receive the revenue, and then you hire a company to do your maintenance. That, that cost of the maintenance of the solar panels, for the most part, they just sit there and they get sunlight, and you don't, they don't need a lot of maintenance for the most part. It's like the wiring in your house, right? It's not very frequent that you need to replace the wiring in your house. So for the most part, they sit there. But every now and then, some of the technical components will go wrong in terms of the communication devices. And so, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year generally is the maintenance contract versus the tens or hundreds of thousands you'd be paying to the company who would own them if you're leasing or if you have a leasing arrangement with them. You know, as we think about municipal building design, and, and, you know, one of the things that is going to come up is solar panels on a parking lot.
Sure.
That if you're going to build a parking lot, it makes the most sense to put solar panels on them. It offsets your electrical costs, period. And the schools have great sunlight coming into their parking lots. There's a lot of money to be made. And when we think about money made, a penny made, you know, it's a penny saved. We currently get electric bills. And so every, every, every bit of, you know, energy you can generate from the sun, it just offsets your costs somewhere else. And there's always a return on investment, and that ROI with solar generally is eight to 10 years. And they last for usually 25. And so usually, you know, over your eight to 10 year life cycle, you go into it with the mindset that you get your replacement devices as well in that cycle. And, and costs over time, as we know with solar, come down. So I really like the proposals about the solar. You know, the one thing at the very end that, you know, I can't not comment on is this, is the tax rate. That, you know, I, I've said this in our meeting, but I'll say it to you as a member. You know, we have to, we have to operate regionally when it comes to tax rates. I know that every individual community gets to set their own, but we do have to have a regional mindset about it. You know, when we look at comparable communities, it's intersections, it's roads, it's transportation that really, that really drives where businesses want to be. And so where businesses want to be, again, roads, just transportation intersections. When you have the communities like that, like Air, like I know it's been mentioned before, like Maynard, other, other communities that again have those intersections, have those common roads, you can get that split tax rate because businesses want to be there. Whereas in communities like Lunenburg, you know, we, Fitchburg has a flat rate, you know, Limser has a flat rate. Everyone from Air to Gardner has a flat rate north of Route 2. So we become the one outlier. We lose business, which means we lose that, that slice, small slice of revenue. So I do think that that's non-viable. We can save for another day my full disagreement with you over whether or not small businesses should be taxed differently than large businesses. I don't think we should be taxing people's success, but that's neither here nor there.
If they were people, I would agree. Walmart has stopped being a person a long time ago.
I think that the Supreme Court's pretty, pretty clear that corporations are essentially people, but that's neither here nor there. I think that the, uh, the other thing about the warrant delivery, again, all these things I think are great concepts. And, and even as you presented the tax rate thing, you seem to concede in your presentation that it's really not a viable option. The one thing that I'd be really interested in looking into, and it's not a long money, is this warrant delivery. I think that we have a history here in our town of really, of people wanting to have that physical paper. But, you know, when I did cammencing door to door and I talked to residents, most people said that the only, that the only time they hear from the town is, you know, once or twice a year when we mail them these things and it goes straight into the recycling bin. They don't even open it. And they're like, it's such a waste of, such a waste of money. Why'd they waste my money?
And trees.
Say again?
And trees.
And trees. Broadly speaking, though, I think that as we think about moving forward, one of the things that I think is hard for people to understand is, is how cost has grown. When we talk about inflation, and I think people get that, but, but when you really get into the underlines here, we're talking about a lot of healthcare costs that have skyrocketed.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and what are the controls that can come there? And then for the average person living in town that's been here for 30, 40 years, kids are through the school system, they, their mindset, they don't receive a lot of services from the community.
Right.
So, you know, I think people have a general mindset, if you want more money out of me, give me more product. And so it is hard. I think people understand inflation, if it's paired with their, with their own job increases. But, you know, if you're on limited income, if you're on social security, if you're on welfare, if you're on any kind of your community, you know, support, if you're on a fixed income in the sense of fixed income being retirement income, and you don't have a lot of savings there, the tax increases become really heavy to bear. And so going to that person who's on that, that fixed income that's only goes up 2%, only goes up 2.1%. And so going to that person who's on that, that fixed income that's only goes up 2%, only goes up 2.1% and you're asking them to do an override, care doesn't matter at that point. It's about the bottom line. And, you know, and, and the lever, we have that lever of doing an override. People don't like overrides. I mean, you know, and, and are you, and I just want to get a clarity on that one. Are you suggesting in that, that I've gone to our legislators and I've said two and a half percent is not enough? When you count for health insurance, we need to have it closer to three. I've said that. But are you suggesting here today that we need to just be in the business and in the practice of doing overrides more regularly?
No.
Okay.
I do not think that the Weston model would be sustainable here. But I think that there is a middle ground between the Weston model and our model. And moving closer to that middle ground will help make up for some of the systemic deficiencies that the town faces. It's not that you need to do it all the time, but you can't be afraid of doing it. Because I think that what people in town, especially the people on fixed income are going to realize is that when their costs go up, the town's costs also go up. It's not like we go and get our paper from a special place that charges less because we're a town. They're going to understand inflation in general. And I think that like with the school last time, the last year's override, that was one where, you know, Dr. Burnham's did nine different budgets down to like different colored markers in the elementary school. We knew what our costs were and it wasn't going to work. We were looking at, you know, catastrophic cuts. And so if it's between catastrophic cuts in town services that affect everyone, including people on fixed income or an override, then I think we got to adopt an override. But I don't think it's, it's, we do not have enough wealth in this town to do what Weston does. It's simply to say that there is someplace in the middle. We can modulate between two, one every 15 years and 15 every, every single year. And, you know, it's, it's a question of where is the pain? And I think that while we are not, I think that we are there. I think that, you know, maybe it's a couple of years away before we have like catastrophic problems. And, and I don't know what the answer is because all of these suggestions, even if we were able to implement all of them and we were able to get like the return on investment for the solo, like you talked about, I still don't think it will cover what we need to have absent an override. And so maybe like one every five years or seven years or 10 years, not two and 30 years.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense. I think my, my only, my last comment, I, you were talking, I thought of this because I was going to say it earlier. And then I'll shut up here. The, the growth in the town in terms of departments. You know, one of the things that I hear frequently from the crowd that does not have children in the school system is they don't understand why the school department budget has doubled over the last 15, 18 years or so, while the student body population has decreased. And whereas when you look at all the other departments in town, they have essentially an increase in customers.
Sure.
And, and roughly a 30% increase in customers.
Yeah.
I, I think that some analysis is needed and here's where I'm going with it. It seems as if most, most or nearly all of the school costs are justified. But I think that when we have legislators that stand in front of us, that represent us and they pass things in the state house that then add cost to us without providing us with money. You know, when we say unfunded mandates, it's too broad. But when you say, hey, in 2018, when Desi did, or as I recently heard, Desi did something that doubled the paperwork for IEPs. And as, you know, when Desi did this, this has led to a direct result or this is the impact of this. And having that kind of cost association to it, how do we find ourselves as a community based on the work you did in the position where we can identify these unfunded cost increases as they occur? So that way we can hold people accountable for giving them to us.
So there's two things I, I think we say. First of all, finding unfunded mandates at the school is really easy because that's basically all they ever are. The grants that are available to the schools, either as competitive grants or non competitive grants are relatively limited. But most of the things that we have to do, like the E911 costs, that had nothing to do with education. We just happen to have a lot of kids in the same place and so we have to do this E911 thing. It's not like they're getting a new textbook or a new computer or they're, we're adding a subject. It had nothing to do with education. It's just by, based on the fact that we are, you know, housing a lot of kids in the same spot. So I think finding unfunded mandates is actually pretty easy. Dr. Gilson actually did this, one of the things that we did when we were preparing the expenses presentation town side and the school side both did revenue and expenses. When we did the expenses, she generated a list of unfunded mandates. I could send it to you. It's in the folder. There's like, there's like two dozen of them. The other thing that I would explain to citizens about why the cost of education increases while the population of students doesn't. It has to do with the Supreme Court's determination that everybody in the United States is entitled to a free, appropriate public education. And if you look at the way in which that requirement has been interpreted, schools are now educating kids that have much more intensive needs than they did in the 50s, 60s, 70s and 80s. When the FAP requirement was handed down by the US Supreme Court, it fundamentally altered who gets educated and where. And that is ultimately a cost that the town bears. There is a way, and we've talked to the legislators about fixing this and having, having costs defrayed by the, the state. But when a person who moves into town has a child that has really intensive needs, even if they never go to our school, based on the US Supreme Court requirement for a free, appropriate public education and the costs associated with essentially providing healthcare at the same time that you provide education. Those costs are enormous. They are staggering. And we have no way to abate them, no way to prepare for them, no way to alter them. Whatever happens when somebody moves into town and we have to do, you know, a very costly out of district placement or they need intensive supervi, uh, intensive services a year, we have to absorb that cost. There is no other town department that has to do that. We do not have a constitutional mandate for police. We do not have a constitutional mandate for fire. We do not have a constitutional mandate for Department of Public Works. There is a constitutional mandate that shapes our obligations for the town and how we educate children. And because of that, it is expensive and it will always increase in cost.
To the tune of hundreds of thousands potentially.
Oh, sure.
A, a child. So basically.
One child.
So basically a solution would be if the state were able to cap out how much communities have to expend to meet the constitutional obligations and then were to supplement that difference. If that cap were a hundred grand, for example, and the state were to pick up the tab for everything beyond that, would that resolve many of those concerns?
It would resolve some of them, but I think a better solution would be to have students that have a certain level of, of need grouped together and have the state negotiate and bargain the costs for those kids to be educated irrespective of where they live. Because what happens now is towns have an incentive to try to keep everybody in district as much as possible. And it's good for the kids, both the kids that have the needs and the kids that have less needs. It's good for them to be in the same classroom. But it's also good financially. And so when the kids that can't be placed in the district get placed outside the district, if those costs were something that were not dependent on the onesies and twosies in Lunenburg or the five or 10 in Fitchburg, but all of those people were organized into one group so that the state had more bargaining power. We just don't have the bargaining power. I mean, if you look at some of the places where these kids go, they are extremely sophisticated, extremely expensive placements. And we only have like one kid there. It's not like, you know, we can do a whole lot. But if you look at how like you can negotiate prices for medication, the more people you pool together, the bigger the group, the more leverage they have. And while the cap might work, it won't prevent that shock to the system that happens when somebody moves into town. And so I think a better solution, and Juliana Hanscom would know way better than I would. But having looked at this from both in terms of representing kids that have special needs and being on the school committee and having kids in school, I think the better idea would be to have the state work together to negotiate their rates. Because we just don't have the, the ability to do that, both in terms of leverage and in terms of wherewithal. I mean, there are dozens of placements and, you know, it's, it's a very difficult process. But if you want to know why public education is so expensive, it is because we have a mandate and that mandate means that we have to educate everybody. It's the reason why the post office has a more difficult time delivering packages than UPS. UPS can say, you live on an island off the coast of Maine, I'm not delivering your package. The post office can't do that and we are in the same position. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you for being so thorough and, and, and helping out the folks at home. Thank you.
Can you talk a little more about the specifics of the CPA?
Yes.
Looking through all of the data and it was interesting just combing through it and seeing what the matches were like. Not a lot of communities get the full match or even close to it. I was trying to figure out exactly how that match is calculated, but I couldn't really find any information on that.
So, and Renee knows more than I do, Carter knows more than I do, but just to break it down from what I understand, there is a two round process.
Yeah, I didn't understand any.
Yeah. So in order to get to the second round, you have to be using the 3% surcharge. If you get to the second round and you have the 3% surcharge, you are eligible for up to 100% match.
But even a lot of the communities that have that 3% surcharge don't get to that point.
Correct. And the reason why is because the mechanism of funding. So the way that the CPA is funded is it is, the money that funds CPA is generated by revenues from the registry of deeds.
Right.
And so the pool is, you know, relatively similar sized pool. And the more towns that join, the less each town can possibly get. But in order to hit that maximum number, you have to have, as a minimum requirement, a necessary but not sufficient requirement is that you have the 3% surcharge. After that, figuring out who in that pool of 3% surcharge towns gets it, it becomes very complicated.
So it looked like there was a base match of 20%. That's at least what I saw. Is that correct?
I don't.
It's, is variable.
Yeah.
It is variable.
Like this year was 18%. The lowest I've seen is 13%.
So that varies even year to year depending.
It depends on the, the bucket of money they have and the number of communities. It's up to 200 communities now.
I know. I was going to say there are a lot of communities that have adopted it now.
All 25, and I confirmed this after Carter said it, all 25 that did it in the first wave still do it, like 20 years later. It is something we should do. It is free money for the town. We spend a nickel to make a dime. We're going to spend this money on these, these buildings anyway. If we do not do this, it's like having everybody in town make luminaries full of cash and lighting them on fire. It makes no sense. We should definitely do the CPA.
Yeah. I mean, it's like a 401K. Like if you have, if you have a match through your employer and you just decide, yeah, I'm not even going to contribute at all to it.
Right, exactly.
Missing out on free money.
It is missing out on free money.
Especially looking down the road at the big projects.
Yes.
That we're talking about that are, would be eligible and the town decides. So you say, okay, we, we want to use X amount of CPA funds towards Marshall Park. That goes to town. Town decides how to spend the money. So it's in control of the town to decide how that money is spent. Now that can be a good thing and a bad thing because depending on how it goes.
So a couple more questions about this. So can you talk about what that money can go towards?
Yes.
There's like certain categories.
Sure.
It all works.
So you get a pool of money, matching funds from the state. In order to be qualified, you have to spend it in at least 10% in one of three buckets. So the first bucket is like capital project, historical preservation of buildings. The second is parks and then the third is affordable housing.
Okay.
And so what, one thing that can happen, and it wasn't clear to me until I went through and read all the literature on it. You can save the money. You don't have to spend 10% every year. So like if you wanted to do an affordable housing project, you could find somebody who's building affordable housing. And you could say like, you know, we're going to contribute some amount of money, do this as a, you know, we'll help you, we'll give you a grant to do this. And we'll save up the money for three years so that it's a meaningful amount of money for a property developer. You can do that, but you have to spend, you have to spend at least 10% in those three buckets.
Okay. And that, that's it? Just 10% of it for any combination of those three buckets?
No, no, no. 10% in each bucket.
Of each, in each bucket. Okay.
Yeah.
That makes more sense. And how do the personal exemptions work exactly?
So there are a number, I think there are five, there are four or five. I think I'm.
I thought three or four.
Okay. So let's take the average. There is an exemption for people of a certain age. There is an exemption for property values. So essentially the first hundred thousand dollars is not counted. And then there are two other exemptions that deal with people who have, you know, unusual finances or, you know, like what we talked about before, people with fixed income. So it is actually a much more nuanced mechanism than say like the split tax rate.
Right, yeah. You can fine tune it a lot more.
Yes. And you can fine tune it in a way that makes sense for your town. If you look at the list of towns, the 200 communities that get CPA funding, very few of them give all of the exemptions. But if, you know, like if it's something that works for your town, you can do them all. You know, one of the towns that I looked at was the gentleman that wrote the Diary of the Wimpy Kid, Plainville. It is a very small town. It's, it's a little bit smaller than us, but it has a lot of the same issues. Where we have like a group of people that have kids going to school and a group of people that have really no school related issues at all. And the way that they did it is, you know, it was part of a town process. The town had meetings. They talked about what they wanted the exemptions to be. And the law gives you the ability to tailor the exemptions to fit your population. So I, I, you know, like compared to the other levers that we have to pull on, this one seems to be one that's geared towards equity. And I think that's really important if, you know, like you're, Michael Ray, your point about going to the people who are on a fixed income. If we can go to them and say, look, this surcharge is not going to have the same impact on you as it would everybody else. In fact, your impact is going to be so much less or you're going to be exempt entirely. That seems to be much more palatable than something like the split tax rate where we would go to Walmart and be like, you get 7% and then we go to the guy who is blaming like one other person and be like, you're also paying 7%. It just seems ridiculous.
It's definitely more palatable than an override too.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. I think it's, I think it's more palatable than an override because, you know, I think that there is a natural reticence on the part of a population to not want to do the override, right? Like they don't want to get in the habit of doing the override because then it seems like the citizens of the town are bailing people out when, you know, something goes awry. As opposed to a response to a dire need. If you have the surcharge, the surcharge is understandable. It has real exemptions that have real impacts on people. And then it generates money to help supplement money we are already spending. It is a much better deal than I think the override would be.
So I didn't do this looking through the spreadsheet. I guess I could have, but do you have an idea of just like what the average matches are?
It's because the, the percentage match varies from year to year.
Yeah.
It is really, really hard to determine.
Yeah.
You know, like there are some towns that very consistently get that 100%. I wouldn't say they're always the same, but you know, if, if there's like a, a group of like 40 towns that have gotten it, you know, 20 of those towns get it on a regular basis. So some towns are just very good at making their application appealing to the people that bill out the money. But I, I don't think it's consistent enough to say like what the average payout is. You could do it by year. You could do the average payout by year on the website, but I don't think they break it down by the average total for the entire lifetime of the, the.
Unless they've changed it. I mean, there's no application to it. I mean.
Right.
It's, it's a formula.
Yeah.
It's a very mapped out formula by how much you collect and what is the percentage of the surcharge, one, two or three, what you can do in, in halves.
Half percent.
But, you know, anywhere up to three and what exemptions you do and, you know, all those things. So once you're in it.
You're in.
What happens at the other end? You just put in how much money they collected and you, you got a number that comes out. That's how much you get.
Yeah. And I think one of the things, you know, we last talked about during the pandemic and it was proposed to come before the town. And I remember we, we decided not to move forward with it on the war because we had a lot of concern about how the, how the pandemic was going to affect everyone. But I mean, at the end of the day, you know, if the town has to spend a hundred bucks, we still got to spend the hundred bucks.
Right.
The question is, is the state giving us 10%? Are they giving us 13%? Are they giving us, you know, 25%? Are they, are they going to match us on, you know, 100%? You know, or, or let me rephrase that. If we have to spend a hundred bucks, it still has to get spent. Are we spending 50 cents and the state are spending, is throwing in 50 cents? Or are we spending 80 cents and the state's throwing in 20 cents? Or are we spending 90 cents and the state's throwing in 10, 10 cents? But the alternative is we're still on the hook for 100% of this.
Right.
So the, the option of having the CPA just is completely, makes total sense. I completely support it. You know, it's a one time 3% increase for the most part, because then it carries through. You, you kind of, it's there, right?
Right.
Going forward. So it's not a 3% increase every year. It's a one time 3% increase.
Correct.
You know, and then it just stays there and, and, but what it means.
It's not a 3% tax increase.
No, no, no.
Be very careful because people wildly misunderstood that.
Those are two very different things.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand how the 3% works, that it's not.
And it doesn't have to be 3%.
Yeah, it could be less, it could be one, it could be one and a half.
You need 0.5% to qualify.
Here's the way I would think of it, and this is the way I explain it. Every night, my wife and I go for a walk and I, we talk about our day and.
Talk about CPA.
We talk about.
Every time, every walk.
Well, one time.
Every single walk.
One time. And I said, it's like this. If, like when we upgraded our heating system at home, we could do it in August or we could do it in September. Those are the windows we got. If we did it in August, we got a rebate from the state. If we didn't in September, we didn't. That's the CPA. Do you want to do it when you get a rebate or do you not? That's it. And it seems like to me that this is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Like it's just a no-brainer.
Well, again, I hope the demographics have changed because this, everything, the passion you're bringing to was exactly what we brought. We would have been one of the first, we would have been one of the first 10 to 15 towns that did it. And I, I wince when I think that we would have had millions, several million dollars that we gave away that could have come for 100% match because it was 100% match for the first 15 years of this.
Yeah, I mean.
It was, it was voted down in 2002 and 2007.
Mm-hmm. I, I will just point out one thing. Mandy Gilman got a lot of people organized. Mandy, Sybil, TJ, they got an override done and everybody told them it would not happen. So I do not think that what.
Not everyone, I did tell them it was possible.
A lot of people, a lot of people told them it would not happen. But I will tell you this, it is a different generation of people in town. And those people are passionate, organized, skillful, smart. If there is a group of people that can get it done, it is that, I, I don't know if they would consider me part of that generation. But that generation of people can get it done. I mean, when we had kids come to the school committee, we had kids organize themselves to come and talk about the value of the music program, to come and talk about the value of education. I think that we are dealing with a much more engaged body politic than we had 10 or 15 or 20 years ago. And I think that if there's anything that comes from the polarization of our politics in this country that's a good thing, it is the fact that people are more engaged. So I know that I should not be hopeful, and I know that Sisypheus is still pushing his rock. But I think that, that this could happen this time. I really do.
Again, again, I, I, I disagree with the fact that people were less engaged then because the votes back then were tremendously higher than they were in this override. But I will say that demographics of the town has substantially changed.
I think we have.
The demographics have changed.
I'm just gonna say it's about results. That override worked. I don't wanna.
But that's, but that's, okay. You wanna oversimplify, that's fine with me.
Winning is.
That's not, that's not what you said. You said people were more engaged now than not more engaged.
Yeah. I, I, I wanna draw a distinction. I appreciate your comment, but I think there's a difference between sophisticated advocates and then generally people who are engaged in the process.
Oh, sure.
We have a lot of vacancies. We see a lot of lack of engagement, but we have very sophisticated advocates. So I just wanna draw the distinction there. And I hope that some of the advocates can become more engaged in the things that don't directly impact them and their families as, as any of us have to do.
I completely agree.
Okay.
I, I, to be, to be clear, Tom, I, I'm just teasing a little bit. Winning makes a big difference.
All right, so I, by the way, I continue to be saddened that we did not fund solar fields with ARPA funds because I think that would have been a great investment.
Yeah.
You mentioned, and I didn't realize you guys did this, you said that you looked at other communities that have done this.
Yes.
Ezekiel did.
Okay. And that they are making a lot of money? I'm just wondering, I haven't seen this data.
Um, we have the data, it's in the drive.
Yes.
It's okay, it exists somewhere that I can see.
It is, it is a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, a 25-acre solar farm, if you lease it out in the low end, you're gonna generate about 100, 80 to 100 grand a year. Yep, but when you own those solar panels and then sell their electricity, you're talking closer to 200,000 to 250,000 a year for a 25-acre solar farm, roughly. And so there's a lot, I mean, and then you multiply that by 25 years. It's a lot of money to be made. And so, you know, of course, the easier way, like I said, is leasing. But the other thing is when you think about like the, the parking lots, again, free money.
Oh, yeah.
We are, we already have the open space. So there, there is a lot of, anything that we can do to offset cost, you know? Something has an ROI of eight, nine years on it, but it offsets long-term operational costs, it's a no-brainer. And I think that as we go through some of this, you know, there's probably a need to change some of our bylaws that require the incorporation of energy-efficient building processes, you know, or, or systems to be incorporated into all plans. Because when we look at the schools and we see all that open parking lot, if we just would have put solar panels on it and we were going to borrow all that money, you know, the, the building cost would be lower. And that's funding that could be used for programmatic needs in the community, other needs in the community. So I think we just have to think about things in that kind of, how do we do this in the smartest way? And instead of being fearful that, hey, I'm trying to keep the dollar amount as low as possible, it's, it's, all projects must incorporate solar canopies on parking lots.
Sure.
You know, something blanket like that.
Yeah.
You know, then, then it's just understood at that point.
Yeah.
It's just part of the cost.
Yeah.
Well, it for questions for me, but I think you guys have started several, many, very good conversations. And this product, this report that you guys have outputted is just incredible. I mean, it's so organized, there's so much in it. So thank you very much for all the work.
And just to mention, go back to something Tom said. Tom was very wise when he pointed out the fact that the problem is when people leave, they don't know what things were. And so what we tried to do in the report is every time there was a, some, something that had like a specific mention, I tried to make sure that it, it is linked back to.
You noticed that, yeah.
The meeting where we said it. So we don't lose this, right? I don't wanna lose it. Like we did work, let's make sure that we have a conversation where everybody knows what the terms mean.
And Dr. Burnham did all the minutes.
Dr. Burnham did all the minutes.
Up to date, so.
And I also especially just wanna thank the staff members who served on this task force. And I know we all have jobs, but, you know, it's a lot to do a nine-to-five and then stay around in town to maybe, I don't know how long your meetings typically went, but, you know, potentially eight, nine, 10 p.m.
No, 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 we got it done by eight.
Yeah, all right, well.
We started at six, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So thank you very much.
All right.
Carter, do you wanna add anything to the conversation? You were sort of like a fly in the wall.
The long story is getting quiet.
I, I think they did quite a bit of work. I would only correct one thing. The CPA is about debt exclusions, not overrides. And now I would suggest that the community not let this gather on the dust on the shelf.
Yep, totally.
So next steps on this, I mean, can we, I know it's a lot of information to digest today.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, you know, the conversation we've had. Clearly, it's engaged us on many different areas. But it seems as if this may be something that we need to kind of keep reapproaching.
Sure.
Especially as we head into the warrant coming up soon. So that way, some of these things are low-hanging fruit.
Oh, super low-hanging. Like the consolidation of investment accounts, we just need to do that. No action is required other than saying, Ezekiel, please make this happen. Please make this happen.
I think I mentioned earlier, too, as the new town manager comes aboard, we're gonna look at our investment policy and try to redo that. Because I don't know, when's the last time it's been looked at?
You might need to get a little closer.
Like I had mentioned earlier, you know, our investment policy needs to be reviewed. I don't know when's the last time it's been updated, but it looks like it's been quite a while. So along with this prudent investment rule, just consolidating all the accounts and making sure what makes sense to the town yield the highest income as much as possible year to year. And that should be looked at yearly. It shouldn't be like one document, we look at this year and then it disappears. It should be every year, you should be reviewing that.
And we're meeting with FinCom on Thursday.
Oh, cool.
The same. So this document was finalized last night.
Yeah, like at 9:30.
Yeah.
I sent it out.
Carter.
Interestingly, what Ezekiel's saying about reviewing it every year in the other state that I work in, it is statute. It is required by law that every year you review that investment management policy. The other thing, though, is it's not just about consolidating the accounts so you have fewer accounts. It is about actively securing bids from banks who want your business. I think that we all become a little comfortable with the, the bank that we're dealing with. You know, in another situation, it is truly a local bank. It's a small, local, four or five-branch bank, and one of them's right down the street. You can walk to it. Of course, the larger banks, right across the street. It's the same, basically, another 15 steps. And the investment yield that the larger bank will give us upon our 10, 12 million that we have that goes through those accounts on a regular basis on any given time, you know? Like you, you've got 55 million, we've got 30-plus million, will be in the quarter of a million-dollar range. And what that took was the finance director, as Ezekiel said, we need to look at the way we do things. And calling in the two banks and saying, what will you pay us? And oh, when the interest rate goes up, what are you gonna do to our compensating balance requirements? And how are my fee structure gonna look like? So I think that it's, it's not just bringing down the number of accounts. It's not just, you know, annually doing that recheck on the investment policy of, was there a change in the law? No, okay. All we gotta do is change the date. It is about periodically, as many of us do. Maybe we periodically call a couple insurance companies or we, you know, can we refinance the house? I think it is just like the revenue, looking at that, as you did with ambulance fees here. It is about putting these things on a schedule. And up, it's year three, and yes, we love our bank, but I wonder who might be a good bank to do, continue to do business with.
All right, well, I think these conversations are definitely going to continue. I know I need some more time to really digest this, but I think a lot of these recommendations may turn into agenda items that we talk about even more, and maybe I'll continue to invite you in so we can talk about them. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm happy to spar about taxes.
Yep, great. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Ezekiel, since you're here, why don't we just do the Quarter One FY25 ambulance write-offs?
In our drive, we, we have the cover sheet, but I didn't see the remaining documents.
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
And the write-off, we have like the email that just.
That's a Q.
No, it's there.
Q1 FY25 ambulance write-offs.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
You should have an, a collectible review document with a list. I don't know if you've received that.
Yep, I believe that's there.
Yep, yes.
So, um, so everything within this document is up for collections. It's write-off, sorry, except for this first line of $940.62. So the total write-off amount, the net, is $26,318.68. This not inclusive of what we've already written off. This is all new balances that, that were uncollectible. Again, these will go to a separate collection company. They're just written off our books as our receivables. However, as the revenue gets collected, if it does get collected, we still receive that income. So it's not lost revenue, it's just getting written off our books. Just wanna make that clear.
What is the age of most of these? You attempted to write them off the books?
So, let's see. The age.
We just did this over the summer.
Yeah, we've done this a couple times. So it's my understanding that we've done pretty much everything in the past. So I thought, just by looking at this, that this was more recent.
This is more recent. I don't have the age, unfortunately, it's not.
How quickly do we write things off our books? I mean, that we.
We're, we're trying to get to this every quarter, as a, as a request from the slipper previously. Because previously, I think the first one we did when I came aboard, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah, it went.
No, no, that one was huge.
Yeah, so the last one.
We're gonna do this every quarter?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the, that's the expectation.
Are any of the patients here property owners that we can lean?
I think we had that conversation recently. There's been no, both, both myself and Chief Sullivan had reached out, and there's no precedent of that being done. And we can't find a law where that's the case, where we can do that. We had reached out to, we, I, I don't know if we've reached out to legal, but we, we can to get a clarification on that.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I mean, I, I don't wanna penalize the people who own homes versus those who don't. But if every quarter we're writing off $26,000, $27,000, people have appreciable assets that we know of, then I think we need to lean those appreciable assets.
Okay.
And most people will just pay the bill rather than paying the fees that come with all the liens and everything else.
Correct.
And just to clarify again, just because we're writing it off the books, you guys, obviously, the debt is still being pursued.
Correct.
Attempt to collect.
Correct.
But you can't collect medical, is this, isn't this considered medical debt?
It is medical debt.
Yeah, so it doesn't show up in people's credit reports now. So I mean, there's really, there's really.
If you have to pay, you don't have to, pretty much.
It's basically like, it, it's optional. I mean, I hate to say it, but I mean, we've kind of created that, it's optional now.
Yeah, for sure.
So the only way you're really gonna force one to pay is if they have the insurance that covers it or if you hit an asset of theirs.
Any other questions about this? Is there a motion to write off the Quarter One FY25 ambulance uncollectible bills as presented?
So moved. And just for the record, in the amount of $26,318.68.
Thank you. Seconded, right?
Yep.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nope, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is a record. We've had you in for like three things tonight.
Yeah, hey.
Thank you.
Once a quarter.
Yeah, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
All right, those are all our meetings. So now we'll go into the interim town manager report.
Well, I'm actually surprised Ezekiel was able to get as much done as he got last week because I spent quite a bit of time with him in the finance team, both on the decision of foreclosure on those several parcels and then revenue projections as we try to put those together. So we also spent time looking at the budget request format. There were a number of folks who expressed some concerns, particularly the schools, about using the ClearGov. So we're gonna take a look at, at whether or not a standard spreadsheet might be an easier way for people to put their information in, and then we would put it into Munis once it's finally approved. With the tax rate in hand, the data files did go to the printer this week. And we expect the tax bills to go out this week. Hopefully, they'll be out Friday, early next week at the latest. But certainly, much more comfortably in line with timelines and expectations. The Ritter Building Roof Contractor has informed us he is comfortable with his coat, and we're proceeding to bring him under contract. And with the alternate, it's a little bit under the capital budget. And we've looked now at the capital budgets for three years in a row, and we think there's enough room within that. The DPW floor project continues, and the roof project began. They started stripping it. We did find a little bit of rot we've gotta deal with, but it's less than $1,000 so far. I don't know what kind of progress they made today. Great day out there. Hopefully, we'll have a few more of those. But that contract looks to be able to, to stay on, on time and on budget. I did have an extended conversation with the school superintendent and the business manager. One of the good things about car phones is you can drive for hours and keep working. But the bids for the Turkey Hill School Fire Alarm came in substantially above their budget. They had 260 left to work with. They had 260 left to work with. The bid alone came in at 322. We have engineering on top of that for oversight of the project, and then possible contingency. And I'll speak to the possibilities when we get to the ARPA. It's complicated a little bit by the fact that they have some bids for other projects that come in on Friday, within your FY25 capital budget. So if those projects come in less, they can apply that delta to the project that's over. If they come in over, the question then becomes, can they do the projects at all? Can they split them apart? So it's, it remains a bit of a moving target, I'm afraid, all these capital projects and the ARPA. The contract for Bright Eyes, Boys Club, Girls Club finalized. I did get back the food pantry contract this week. And as I say, the main wrinkle in ARPA is those school projects and getting contracts for the cultural council artists.
Sorry to just interrupt real quick. It was my understanding that that was already closed out. Didn't we talk about that?
What?
The artisan schools?
Well, they, my understanding, and I think the interim town manager poked his head into their meeting one evening, was that they had everything lined up, and they had, they were getting or had the contracts for the artists, but I'm assuming, and please tell me if I'm wrong, that you haven't got them?
I think, I think it is, you know, the world that I live in of what's a commitment and the world of what they live in is a commitment. And they said, well, you know, the schools have all that. Well, the schools did, but they were proposals from various artists of programs to put on. No one had yet put ink on paper for a real contract.
Gotcha.
That is the challenge.
Okay.
Because I've got to have those signed contracts by December 31, but Dr. Burnham, you know, did step in and say, just, you know, cultural council, connect with my, you know, arts and enrichment people, and we'll get this done. So I want to thank her for that. And I'm sure we can do it now that we've really sort of understand what each side was talking about. And again, I thank Dr. Burnham for taking that on a bit. With recruitment, you know, with active recruitment does continue for the PAC videographers and the assistant to the sewer business manager. We did have interviews on the police officer. I'm awaiting for the report from the interview team, and then, of course, the background checks and the like. And then, you know, an appointment date, depending upon the academies, and the network That tax bill, as I've told you, will be going out with a flyer in it for volunteers, for our various commissions, ranging from the agricultural commission to the conservation commission, that cultural council we just spoke about, which takes that arts lottery money that comes through from the state and programs it out to enrich and offer programs for the community. The personnel committee remains without a quorum, and this list will be on the website as well. So I didn't feel very productive because we were so concentrating on, you know, a few, very few tasks. The afternoon Tuesday meetings with Chris Ruth, today we had Chris, Julie, and we had, I don't know if I have any of them with me, but Izzy and Kara put together, you know, a much nicer spreadsheet of the projects, so we can understand exactly how each one has flowed, and I could actually look at them as a collection of projects as opposed to simply account numbers. And, you know, with the new chart of accounts, I think, I don't know if I mentioned, but Izzy had a slightly different approach than I had. Frankly, I think it works fine and will work well for you. But this gives you an ability to look at all the projects in a year, and now a project manager can sit across from Chris, or Public Works, or Police in a staff meeting or whatever, just walk down them. What's the status? Where are we? So this, I think, is a considerable improvement. Like I said, I don't necessarily feel real productive last week. Happy to answer any questions about it. I think when we get to the ARPA conversation, it'll be a little bit more productive for you.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Thanks, Carter.
I did convince Ms. Dougherty to engage in an exit interview on PAC with me.
I have a funny feeling it's more of an interview than an exit interview.
Yeah.
It'll be a nice conversation. I will learn a lot, and I think the community will.
Yeah, I look forward to watching it. All right, thanks. All right, so moving on to old business, we have license renewals that we still need to get to. So if you open up the folder, the first file you see is 2025 CV, that's Common Vic. So those are the licenses that we didn't vote on last week, the ones that we identified. So we can start there. All of these were confirmed to be paid, they're all set. Sure exactly what happened, but that's fine. So same process as last week, if we want to go through them. So I can just go through them one by one, and then if there's any that you want to put to the side or ask any questions about, just interrupt me. So Lunenburg Diner, yep, Common Vic, these are all Common Vic, so I'll just say the name. Il Forno Restaurant and Catering, Shady Point Beach and Campground, Dunkin' Donuts on 451 Mass Ave, Dunkin' Donuts on 400 Electric Ave, Lunenburg Gas and Market, Dunkin' Donuts on 134 Lemonster Shirley Road, and Waylum Gas Service. Any issues with any of those? Are we good to renew? Is there a motion to renew?
Move to renew all the Common Vittler licenses as read.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. All right, and then we also have our miscellaneous licenses here as well, so same thing, I'll just read them out. Smokestack Roasters, Weekday Entertainment, Bedrock Bar and Grill, Weekday Entertainment, Bedrock Bar and Grill, Jukebox License, Red Rock Bar and Grill, Automatic Amusement License, Waylum Gas Service, Automatic Amusement License, Baker's Waylum Variety, Automatic Amusement License, three of them, Lakeview Club, Automatic Amusement License, Lakeview Driving Range Base License, American Graffiti, Jukebox License, Bad Larry's Jukebox License, Lakeview Club, Jukebox License, Bad Larry's, Weekday Entertainment, and Il Forno Restaurant and Catering, Weekday Entertainment. Any issues with any of those?
I have a question about what a base license even is.
As do I, and I've asked three people it, and no one seems to know that I've asked.
I'll pull up our policies real quick.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a good explanation, which explains why it's $63.
Right.
It should be in 74 cents, just to make it rounded off to be the most obnoxious thing in the world.
Right. I knew someone was going to bring it up, so that's why I didn't ask.
Page 83?
I have it printed.
All right.
Do we want to vote on the rest of them while we consult our policies?
I can read it.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Section 4.11, base license. General operation of establishments such as bowling alley, golf, driving range, drive-in theater, amusement center. These establishments also require licenses for daily and Sunday operation. Base licenses shall expire annually, and fees shall be in accordance with the current fee schedule. All applicants must submit a query form with application. Application shall be forwarded to the building official and Board of Health for recommendation.
Okay.
So it was a lack of creativity in the name of the license.
Yeah, clearly. All right, thank you very much, Amanda, for referencing that.
I move that we renew all the licenses, all the miscellaneous licenses as read by the chair.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
With that definition of base license, we had that, and I'm sure it's up here somewhere, what is, what is the name of that business that came before us for that driving range? And they were looking for an alcohol license as well?
The indoor range?
Yeah.
But that's an indoor range.
Yeah, so it's...
That would be an automatic amusement license.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Did we already go through that with the alcohol this year? I don't recall that. Anyway, nothing to do with this motion since, as Tom just explained.
Sure. No, that's a good question. I'll follow up on that one.
All right.
Okay, motions we made and seconded. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I'm trying to remember, I know they were on Summer Street, right?
Yeah, they're on Summer Street, but it's not in the previous week either.
Yeah, because we didn't do any of these miscellaneous licenses.
The only one we had was American Graffiti on Summer.
Right. Okay, yeah, I'll look into that. Thank you.
All right.
All right, cool. Thank you very much. ARPA, want to just start with the fire alarms, Carter?
Actually, what I'd like to do is, there's four items I'd like to bring to your attention. They're highlighted in yellow if you have your spreadsheet open. The first is, I'm looking to boost the amount on the staff payroll and IT challenges, and the main reason is that we still don't have a network administrator. And so we have Suzer covering what, much of what a network administrator would do for us. And we have Kara kind of coordinating a lot of that. And Suzer, as you can well imagine, costs more per hour than a network administration, even with a full burden rate. The next one, if we go down...
How much do you want to increase it?
By about $12,000.
Okay.
Yeah, what I've been doing is, you know, as the account is in trouble, I transfer some of the salary from the network administrator over, but it's only going to carry me so far.
Okay.
The next one down, and again, I've highlighted this in yellow, the DPW, we did go ahead and move those dollars to the tree removal, to have that internal contingency that we talked about possibly needing. If we, in fact, use all the ARPA, then great, we've saved $25,000. If we need it someplace else, then we can transfer it within the operating budget.
And again, I'm going to ask you for each of these, so how much did you add to this to get the 40?
This one, we added 23.
Okay.
Because we kept the contract under $50,000 from that $10,000 to $50,000 range on the 30B procurement.
And I realize I don't have to keep asking you, because the next column says how much was previously committed.
No, no, that's okay. It's okay. I think it's good for folks, you know, to know what we're doing here. The next one is the Town Hall Capital Cost Overrun. We've applied $32,500, which would leave about a $10,000 contingency within the capital budget itself. You had $60,000 and change for the, for the roof, and by applying the ARPA and doing some other things, we're able to keep that to 32.5. We'd originally thought we might have to apply as much as $55,000 to some of these projects, but at this point, we're looking at 32.5. But that contract has been signed. We've met with the contractor. Chris has arranged to get the mortar tested, so the mix is the same as what we're using Turkey Hill Fire Alarm Overrun, I've just put question marks in there because frankly, until they get their bids on Friday, I don't know. Is there, you know, keep your fingers crossed? Does that bid come in a little bit lower, and we can wash those together? They're in FY24, and there's not a lot of wiggle room in there. There is in some of the other years, but I can't move from year to year. I can move within the year, as I understand it, but not year to year. So they're 62 short on the base bid.
And how much of a contingency would they?
Possibly $25,000 short on the engineer.
That's 87.
Which makes 87.
We have 83 left.
And we've got about 83 left. Which means if we commit some numbers, these things, that they will continue to be a little bit elastic over the next couple of weeks here. But if we set aside that 82 for potential, this school project, I still have to figure out how to get it done, because they won't have the contract signed in time. So I'm afraid, Mr. Lonzo, I'll have to do my shell game of putting it into the school budget someplace, so they can then, you know, move their operating money over to cover it. They are pretty comfortable, they're not going to have a contractor challenge, but you just, you never know. So my suggestion at this point is that we leave that 83 or change there for potentially assisting the school projects, pending what happens on Friday. And if everything works great, they might not need it. If it doesn't, we've got to figure out what, in fact, they can do. If those budget bids come in so high on Friday...
Fire alarm was a capital project that was approved at the town meeting, right?
Correct.
So if that doesn't get done, they could potentially raise the money, we could try to raise the money at the town meeting on May.
I don't know why those are turned.
I mean, what I'm saying is that the fact that it came in over doesn't free up any ARPA money that we'd already assigned, so we could put this money potentially anywhere.
You have your bids now. It's considered a safety issue for the children.
No, I'm on the capital planning committee, I want the thing to happen.
Right.
I also don't, you know, again, my same thing I came back to all the time, I don't want to not have ARPA money in...
Well, you know, so we've got a couple of things that could happen here Friday. It is conceivable the projects could come in below estimate.
Yep.
And then that delta would be available towards this project. We would assist them in closing the gap, and then whatever's left, I'll paint a truck or something on. We'll do that. The other possibility is a much worse picture, which is that the bids come in considerably higher. They can't undertake those projects at all, and now they have that project money sitting there, which can go towards Turkey Hill. And then they can come back at the annual town meeting, they can go back to the capital committee and say, here's what happened, can we get on that list for the annual town meeting of 2025?
Well, we just finalized our list, so that part, that part probably not happening.
But I mean, that is a potential. That might close the gap also. I just don't know until we get those bids in hand on Friday.
So I'm just trying to understand what that would mean if we do allocate this money towards that, and then, I don't know, if they don't need it, they have those other projects that could cover it. Since this is our last meeting before the end of the year, what would we do in that case?
You would trust your town manager and then kick the hell out of him if you didn't like what he did.
All right, gotcha.
I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
It's your last meeting. We've still got a number of wild cards sitting out there. I think we've tried to do our very, very best to ensure that you don't lose any of the dollars. And we can't use these to pay back the 36 on the FEMA and the COVID cares grants. I guess I'm asking for the flexibility and your understanding, and I'll report to you when I know what happens.
And not likely, or not a pleasant scenario, we could also call a meeting...
I know, yeah.
Monday before, you know, on the 30th, to just have a five-minute meeting to say, hey, we can allocate. I'd prefer not to do that.
Yeah, if we have to, we will.
It could be a Zoom meeting.
Regardless of who goes.
It could even be a Zoom meeting, so.
Oh, it would, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely tracking that. All right, so you're thinking that we could apply the remainder, other than those other items, to that capital project, the schools, instead of the...
If needed, and I think we recognized early on that, given how many of the capital projects were turning out to be short of funds.
Yeah.
When they weren't available within the capital budgets, perhaps we would use this to backfill that gap. I think that was approved.
I have no problem with that, and then the last ditch area, if there's extra money, is just putting to the vehicles that we've already done. So that would make sense. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I am too.
I mean, so should then the motion, if you're willing to entertain it, should the motion be to, for us to delegate our authority to commit to the town manager the remaining $83,000, some change of funds, and then that resolves the concern and allows him to kind of move forward as discussed, and we'll pick this up in January with kind of how it all ironed out?
I'm fine. I'd rather not, I'd rather not give a whole detailed list, but I will be unhappy if what was chosen is not on the list we just decided.
Yeah. Yeah, you can give the flexibility, I think.
Yeah.
I seriously trust Carter to follow it.
I mean, at this point, I'm looking for the flexibility on this last 82 or 83. I am asking you to understand, some of these numbers may still...
I understand.
I don't know, I had something come in 233 below budget, and something come in 2,500 above budget.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion to that extent, then?
I would make a motion that we entrust the last $83,000-plus dollars that remain in ARPA to be committed to the interim town manager, pending opening of bids this Friday for the school, and possible allocation to the school, and otherwise to commit anything else as he sees fit, as we have discussed at this board.
Second.
And to report back.
And to report back.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, any other discussion on ARPA? All right, well, thank you again, Carter. I know it was a tremendous effort to get all of this under contract and all the purchases reimbursed and everything, so.
Well, again, I just want to say it's, it's, I delegate, they do a great job. But thank you for the kind thoughts.
All right, moving on. Seller hold 531 Reservoir, Reservoir Road and 56 Carr Avenue. So last week, it was my understanding that we were sort of all in agreement that we could sell 56 Carr Avenue and potentially hold on to 531 Reservoir Road.
They were in that flip-flop.
Or did I get, you're right, I did get that the wrong way.
Right, the other way, yep.
My apologies. Other way around. Carter, I believe you have some more information on this, too?
So I owe you a full primer on exactly what this new law is and how it's working. It's going to take me a little while to write that up, but in simplest terms, for the decision that is facing you tonight, when you get the foreclosure, if you think you want to keep the land, you must inform the property owner within 14 days. So there's not a lot of time. If this thing goes to foreclosure, goes through the court, lawyer gets it, you've got 14 days to notify the owner as to whether or not you want to keep it. As part of that process, you must have a formal appraisal done. So there's an expense, and there's a time challenge. Then, if the appraisal comes back, and let's say the appraisal comes back at, let me just use a number for illustration, $500,000. And the taxes, penalties, interest come to $127,000. You have to have the difference to pay to the property owner. So what the lawyer is basically saying, because this was the first time around with this, is do you want this one to go to foreclosure now? You don't ever have to take it to foreclosure. You can wait until you have CPA, or until you have a means of dealing with.
So these, these properties have not been foreclosed?
They have not been foreclosed upon.
I think the question that I have then is first, on the 56 Carr. I have a question about are there any approved development plans by the planning board or ZBA for that property? I believe the answer is yes. And so I would like to know, that, that's my only question. Do we have approved development plans? And the reason why I ask that is if you have approved development plans and you choose, in the town where to choose to not foreclose, the land value, even though we may get it appraised a certain amount, becomes more valuable because you can sell the property with those approved plans.
If they have not expired.
If they haven't expired.
They don't last forever.
I don't think they've, there are, there are in-force plans. I think that, that plan had expired.
Okay. If we can just.
But we should find out.
Yeah, confirm that.
So I don't think we should make any decision today.
Right.
Because it's the holidays, and since we haven't foreclosed, and I don't think foreclosure court is going to be rubber stamped.
No.
Things like presidential pardons that are coming up, so like candy, I think we can, we have time.
Yeah. We're on the same page about that. All right. Anything else on that?
The other property that you were not necessarily interested in retaining, can we submit that to one to foreclosure at this point?
531 Reservoir.
My understanding was there was only one of the two that you might.
Right.
Be interested in retaining.
I'm fine with releasing Reservoir.
I did want to ask if we wanted to vote on that one tonight.
Yes.
All right. Renee? Yeah, here we go with that. All right, is there a motion then for that?
I move for the select board to authorize foreclosure and the sale of 531 Reservoir Road.
Not for, we don't want to foreclose, right?
No, for Reservoir?
For Reservoir Road, we do.
We do.
Oh, we do want to foreclose.
That's the one, yeah.
And dispose of, sell it.
No, no, that means we want to hold the foreclosure. We don't want to foreclose.
So you've got the 11 acre.
I'm all the motion.
Hold on. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
You, you, you got the 11-plus acre parcel that kind of sits in amongst, my understanding is that that's the one you thought you might want to hold.
That's 56 Carr.
Then you've got the other one that's a couple of acres.
Right.
And it's got a very long pork chop leg, if you will.
Right, it's a timer headlock.
That goes in, and I can't remember which one is which one.
Yeah, that was Reservoir.
Reservoir Road.
Yeah.
So the Reservoir, we don't want to own it, so therefore we don't want to foreclose it.
We, no, we have to foreclose.
You want to foreclose it so you can sell it.
Yeah. The other one we're holding on to, we don't want to foreclose.
Foreclose to, so, okay, I, I get it. All right.
Foreclose, foreclose and sell.
Yes.
Yes, so right now they owe us the money, we can foreclose, so the motion would then be to foreclose.
Okay.
And then eventual sell.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make that motion. I move for the select board to authorize tax total foreclosure of 531 Reservoir Road and authorize the eventual sale of said property.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Only because I, I still have some residuals Tony Skilbrini rant in me. I mean, I ranted about their stupid ruling. I mean, this is like the most ridiculous ruling ever, like, be delinquent on your taxes, and if the town sells it, you get the money anyway, so wow, windfall for me for not doing anything and being delinquent on taxes, you know, for whatever amount I'm delinquent on.
But you're going to charge them all your fees and time and?
Nothing.
It's very significant.
Pay, pay your taxes, or your property gets taken.
And that other property.
The old way was a lot better.
Yeah, yeah.
The other property was all the way back to 2007, so it's, you know, it's a long time to not pay anything.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. Very long time. All right, host community agreement, we don't have that tonight. Discussion on annual climate survey policy, do we want to talk about that tonight?
Nope.
No, all right, cool. Name of the select board and town manager goal setting process, pass over that for the new year. Current business, we already did that one, and then comparison communities for wage and other studies. Carter, I'll let you talk to that.
So the reasoning that this is in front of you is, my understanding is that previously the staff would determine what they thought were, were comparables, and they would use them, and for whatever reason, I am struggling to open up this bloody drive. Okay, bear with me one moment. It's my belief that we should present to you the communities we're going to use so that when the data comes in, the discussion is about the data and not necessarily, why did you use that community, or why did you use this community? Now, there's all different kinds of ways to look at this, you know, population, equalized value, road miles, density, you could create a spreadsheet that really would lead you down many, many rabbit holes. But how do most people decide how far, where they want to work? How far are they willing to drive? That's our simplistic approach to this. The average in Massachusetts is 30 minutes. Out this way, as you get a little bit more rural, it can become 45 minutes. So Julie looked at the communities that were within 45 minutes of us. For those communities that were less than 5,000 people, our belief is that they don't have the same amount of resources as we have, they don't have the work, perhaps the interesting work challenges we might have, so we thought that those would come off the list. For some communities that might be within the 45 minutes but were so considerably bigger, Worcester, Shrewsbury, we just, we just didn't think that they would be our competitors. Now, there are three communities that, you know, you might, you might talk about, well, you know, Gardner, Fitchburg, Lemonster, different form of government. Fitchburg and Lemonster considerably more population. But I would suggest that at, below the department head level, you know, at the clerk in the treasure collector's office, at the outreach worker in the council on aging, at the truck driver in DPW, at the police officer level, they are comparable, they are our competition.
We have seen that, too. We have had employees go to Fitchburg.
So it's our suggestion that we do use those communities, but not at the department head level. At the department head level, they're so much larger, have such a different degree of complexity. No disrespect to any of our department heads, but I don't think that you can compare our chief of police here to the chief of police in Fitchburg or, or Lemonster, let's say. So we kind of think that they're all comparable, except at the department head level, those three communities are not comparable. This is, it's kind of a simplistic approach. Like I say, you could create all kinds of, of comparables and drive yourself crazy. We thought this simplistic approach might work. Happy to talk with you about any of the communities, anything that is, you know, that sort of bluish, I guess, striped is not on the list.
I have some thoughts. You know, again, this is, I think, another positive step forward, being part of the negotiating team. When I took over for Linda Carrier in 2017, when I went from the DPW over to the police department, and as well as helping Heather with the police department negotiations on the other side, this is long overdue. You know, we were, I know you mentioned that some town, some town staff were proposing different towns, but the towns essentially from the negotiating table came from, came from the town side, they didn't come from the unions. And we would propose different towns, and it was always, oh, you know, they make more money, they have more tax. Well, that doesn't matter to the staff. You know, I went to Concord because it pays more money, essentially is the best. There was a lot more that went into that, but I think this is a great start toward getting or retaining our employees. We can't just look at comparable towns to Lunenburg because we're not going to get or retain our staff. So thank you for doing this, this initiative, whether it came from Julie or from you, I think it's great and long overdue.
It's, it's, it's a team effort. She was tasked with doing it. We talked through lots of different approaches, and this is the end result of that, that effort.
I'm assuming, I mean, there's one thing that's, to me, the missing, and I think it's, or badly, badly represented here. So the fact of the tax rate, so of course, tax rates are absolutely, positively, I wish we would stop using them, irrelevant to anything. Tax rates mean absolutely nothing.
It, it does.
What we should have instead is the average tax bill. Because if we're going to compare ourselves to Concord, we should just pack up the bags and go. Because we're not going to compete with what they can pay, and if people can go, and we have examples of people who have gone, we ain't going to pay enough to compete with Concord. You know, when, when Mr. Skilbrini is talking about people like Weston, towns like Weston passing overrides, anything they want in Concord, they pay in cash, the people probably pay their taxes in cash, you know, over there.
Very different.
And I have this, I have this on good, like, money is not an obstacle in Concord. So that, to me, is not a comparable town. We should choose something that's within 25 plus or minus percent of what our average tax bill is for the average home and say, I mean, I'm just using a number, it could be 30%, but we can't, otherwise we'd be choosing Weston and Wellesley and, you know, I can think of some other ones. It just wouldn't be fair to put them in. So I think that list, that tax rate should be replaced by average tax bill.
We, we can do that. Let me just suggest that there is an additional step that you can look at. In one community, we used what we called an affordability ratio. We took the average family tax bill, and we divided it by the median family income.
That's fine, too.
And that gave us an idea of how much of that median family's income, assuming they owned a house, and assuming it was the average bill, they were paying. And in that one community, we found that they were actually only paying around 3.6% of their income in taxes, whereas everyone else we were looking at was up into the 7%.
Right.
So.
So those, I mean, I didn't choose something more complicated because you indicated that you could get yourself into some rat.
No, no.
I didn't want to go into that rat's nest.
No, no.
But obviously, there are very much fairer ways to look at.
You, you are suggesting one very simple, I'm not going to say simplistic, but clear.
It is simple.
Well, but, yeah, right, but just like the 45 minutes is. What I'm suggesting is that we not go down, I mean, there are some folks that try to figure out every single, you know, category.
No, I think what you just said, average tax bill for the average, or the, not even not the average, what the median.
Yeah.
Income is, and doing that ratio, I think is, would be an important wealth factor. Yeah.
I agree, Tom, but I think, I don't think it hurts to see towns like Concord. While I agree, we obviously cannot pay the same salary rates. I don't think it hurts to look at them, even if we're, even if they're outliers, like we know we can't compare, having that additional data that you just talked about, but I still don't think it hurts because the reality is, they still are competitive communities, regardless of whether we can obtain that, that same level, you know, of pay or not. Obviously, we know we can't, but I don't think it hurts to look at it as a comparable.
I think you could look, that, if that were, if that were the case, there, there would be nothing you would look at then, because it would be nice to see what lots of people do. I, I don't think it's competitive, only because that's what the title of this is. Those aren't competitive towns, they compete for people, but we can't compete on salary.
They, they compete for recruiting people, and they compete for retaining people.
It doesn't just have to be salary, too. You can look at the benefit packages, because that's something that, when I was on the negotiating team, you know, you're looking at the package as a whole. It doesn't have to just be salary, because there are things that other communities like Concord do that are much less expensive to the town, that we could potentially look at in our CBAs or in the SAP versus just salary. When you're limiting it to just salary.
Well, I, I didn't, I mean, what I, we're using salary interchangeable with the total, the whole, the total benefit package, that's really what I mean.
And maybe we should relabel this.
I don't use that because most people.
Right.
Their eyes glaze over.
Maybe we should relabel this not comparison or competitive, but, you know, labor market area towns, I mean, which is what, that's really what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I, I will say, though, I think when you start doing that, it, it loses the meaning to the general public, right? I mean, if you, for example, library trustees need to get this in order to be able to do, you know, their work, if we started calling it, you know, labor, something, I think comparable competitive community is about as clear as it can be. It tells everyone what we're trying to do here. I, I don't recommend a language change just to soften the impact. I, I, I agree with what, I'm in between the two of you. I, 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 but I'm in agreement with Tom. I think that Concord should be removed. I hear what you're saying. We lost a staff member to Concord. We, you know, it, it is 40-something minutes away, it is certainly commutable from Lunenburg, but we know that Concord will consistently be on the upper echelon of any comparable that we're doing. I, I don't know if, if, for example, when I met with the libraries, I mentioned this previously, you know, just for purposes, they threw in like Nantucket and a couple of other towns, just to kind of see those outliers and how ridiculous it was compared to what we were. I don't have a problem with someone throwing that in with Concord just to have an idea, but to me, I don't think that we should be trying to actively compete with Concord. I don't think, I, I do think that we are going to need to actively compete with the cities around us when we lose staff to them. I hear what you're saying, Amanda, but I, I just think, I, I like the list overwhelmingly. The one outlier to me is Concord, because Concord really has appeal to the Boston market, that, you know, if you're in Boston, Concord could be a very appealing place to work, in the Belmont area, Arlington, I mean, there's so many communities that are way outside of the range of Lunenburg that, that Concord is comparable to, and I don't think Concord's looking at Lunenburg.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not specifically saying Concord when I was, I say Concord because it's my, you know, it's obviously my other frame of reference, because that's where I work. And I think they do a lot of things very well, honestly, aside from pay.
I'm sure they do.
And I've brought some of those things forward. But I mean, yeah, if you're looking town hall to town hall, but Acton is right next door to Concord. Why is Concord different than Acton? Their budget and the way they pay their employees is very similar. Same thing, you know, overall, regardless of whether we're moving one town or not, I don't, I don't care. I think it's fine. I just, I think this is a much better approach, regardless of whether we remove Concord or we don't. I'm not that, you know, stuck on it.
I'm fine with keeping Concord in.
Yeah.
If we have, if we have that factor that we talked about, if we have a wealth factor that shows to everybody, hey, we're, just be aware that if you're going to point to them, that I'm going to point to another factor of them, too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great approach.
What I would suggest is that we start with this list. We'll bring it back with the other factor. We'll bring it back with the other factor. And then, the board can react to that. And should we get any responses from those communities the board's not comfortable with, we'll simply not use them.
Okay.
And then take a formal vote, because I would, frankly, we're behind on getting this out, and I would like to get it out, given the need to prepare budget, think about SAP, enter negotiations. If that approach is agreeable with the board, I, I would go that way.
Yeah, it's agreeable to me.
Yep.
Me as well.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
All right, cool. Thank you for doing this, though.
Well, again, I just...
Yeah. Every time I thank you, it's because you are here. It's also implicitly thanking the team as well.
Yeah.
All right.
I know Julie worked on this, and so with our approval, I know that the library's been waiting for this, so we can provide it to them, so that way they have comparables. Again, I sat in their meeting, and I, I looked at some of the towns they were looking at, and I was like, I think we might want to help.
Yeah, well, Nantucket's a little bit too much.
Yeah, no, this makes...
One thing I was going to say, though, about Concord, you made the point that they're in a separate market, that it, you know, compete, it's more sort of like the Boston area. I was just going to say that Boston is creeping out further and further west.
It is. And, and I've mentioned this before, but, you know, it's becoming incredibly relevant. I'm, I'm on the committees with Mass Development runs Devens. I'm on these committees with the housing plans. I mean, Devens was the only community in Massachusetts that had a housing cap of how many homes you're allowed to build. It just got eliminated. So, we are in process of planning for no less than 500, up to 1,000 units to come online in the next, within the next seven years.
Wow.
That is going to have a humongous impact. When you think about companies like Commonwealth Fusion, which is out of Devens, they have 1,000 employees now, their average salary is 130 something thousand dollars a year. That's a lot of people in North Central Mass that need a place to live. And so, it is going to have an impact on us. You know, we already see the impact of Bristol Myers Squibb, but there's more developments when we, when you have that industrial hub that's a town away with 10,000 people working there now, and high-paying jobs. It's, we're going to feel it here. We're going to feel it. So, I agree that we are going to become more, we start introducing that kind of Boston money into North Central Mass, we're going to feel in our town, too, because it comes with higher expectations and services that you expect.
Yeah, totally.
Sure.
Yep, for sure. All right. Moving on, minutes warrants action items. We don't have any minutes tonight. I don't believe we have any warrants either, do we?
No.
All right. Action items? All right.
I actually do have one.
Oh, yes.
And I sent an email. Do you have a running list, Carter, of how many public records requests we've been receiving, and how much time is being allocated? Staff is, is, is doing it just in general?
We have been logging the requests. We have not been logging the amount of time, and I think that that would be a good addition to the record that we...
And if you could share that with us, so we could see...
Sure.
That, I think that would be helpful, because that seems to be an, an increasing burden on our staff, and to know where that is would be helpful.
In some communities, I've put it up on the web. I've then been asked to take it down, but I think the public has the right to see who's asking.
I think the public should know that we're getting daily Freedom of Information Act requests from a resident. I, I do. I, I think the public has the right to know that every single day, our staff are spending time on one resident's Freedom of Information Act request, every day.
They're, they're not always formal requests, but there is generally at least one lengthy communication each day.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, I sent an email, I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it.
Yep, well, I, I didn't get a chance to really review it, but I did skim through it, and I think you're spot on.
Yeah, as do I. So, thank you for bringing that up, Amanda. All right, committee reports.
School committee meets tomorrow night, and that's all.
So, Town Manager Screening Committee, you heard from today, so we finished that, and then we'll, those, that list of three will come to this, this board. Capital Planning met Monday, yesterday, and finalized our list, sent it to the interim Town Manager, and that is all ranked and is available, and that is that.
I don't have an update for the Master Plan Steering Committee, other than last week, and the Economic Development Committee is meeting on, it's Thursday, the 19th. I won't be able to be there, but I will watch it and report back at our next meeting.
Municipal Building Design Committee, we met last night, and we had our, we were really impressed. You know, we've, we've been under contract with this team now for two weeks, and we went over the first presentation of kind of layout that they're, that they proposed. I will say, you know, in their process, certainly what they presented was, was not very palatable by the committee, but what it, what it was, was an opportunity for us to explore a lot of these options and kind of weigh into them about how we want the site to work, how we want the building to operate. And so, we really covered a lot of ground in, last night, but it's quite impressive with the technology that, that the architectural firm is using to be able to kind of come up with these renderings, the plans that they have.
I saw it, it's really cool.
It is, it is. And, you know, being able to do it. I will say additionally, and I want to mention this, I, I did call Steve Walker and let him know, I was going to let the, make the board aware of this, PAC. So, I, I've kind of given some highlight into this previously, and, and I am looking for some guidance from this board tonight on this subject, because the Municipal Building Design Committee is created from this board. The subject of PAC, in the, in the vision, we were planning that PAC was going to be accounted for in TC Passios, and, and anything that we do there, which is not in this phase of how we're trying to move forward yet, and we assumed the building had several more years in it, and that it may be accommodated at the Turkey Hill. Bottom line is, the information we've received from Chris Ruth kind of puts a lot of concerns into the deteriorating condition of TC Passios, which then kind of escalates PAC's, the need to accommodate PAC sooner. The general sentiment on the Municipal Building Design Committee is that the overwhelming public response that we receive related to PAC is that the public is not interested in, in, in premier space being built for PAC studios. There is agreement for there to be a control room that's provided for PAC, but there is not agreement on the studio space.
And where, where are you getting this from? From the committee or from...
From the committee.
Okay. The committee doesn't believe...
So, I met the committee, Municipal Building Design Committee. I did meet with PAC. I expressed to them some of the concerns. They provided a reduced space needs request of roughly 14, 25, 1,400 square feet. However, their request is 2,700 square feet. When we think about this new build, I mean, it is growing in size, you know, but the footprint of this new building, first floor is roughly, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. It's going to be a little bigger than I think we had initially thought going into it, but we're still within our threshold, because we're using high-dollar estimates. But the PAC building would essentially be the same footprint of what this new town hall will be. And, and I think that's not being received very well from Municipal Building Design of how, of the size of it, and then the cost of it. And so, the architect is kind of moving forward with planning to break off it as a separate building, but I want to get some guidance from this board about PAC in particular. It is a bit of a pivot from where we have been. We have not, we did not go into this RFP, we did not go into this process with PAC in mind. But now PAC is in mind, I need guidance on how far we should be going to accommodate PAC, or, or should we defer to the committee's majority on this?
Well, they need a studio. It's an essential service, not to mention all the equipment that is in there that needs to be properly cared for in a location that's safe.
So, when, I will say that...
I would agree.
Storage, when, when we talk about square footage, storage capacity is being accounted for. That's not a lot of square footage. It's, I can pull it up, but it's about 200 to 300. The capacity to edit, the software, what's being called a control room, that's about 300 square feet. Roughly looking through their request, the core of it, which the Municipal Building Design Committee is in agreement with the core, it's a much lower request. What, what is eating up a lot of square footage is new studio space that doesn't currently exist and isn't being replicated. It's new studio space, it's booths for podcasts, which are kind of isolated booths for podcasting, that's, that, that is, becomes a new feature. So, I guess the question is, should the Municipal Building Design accommodate? So, and I think some of the comments that were made from the Municipal Building Design Committee were that, you know, the meetings that are televised, that the ability to get a meeting that's televised, recorded, produced, and online, the square footage need for that is only about 300 square feet, or 200. And, and the programming, the additional programs that PAC does, the Municipal Building Design opinion, as expressed by several members, is that the viewership is too low to warrant that kind of money on building a new building. So, the guidance from the board is, do we lean into PAC? PAC believes strongly that they're going to be, that they are, the way that they keep the community connected, they are advocating heavily to be accommodated for. The, the Municipal Building Design Committee is split, and we're split with a slight majority saying, don't accommodate PAC, but we're split.
Well, I'll, I'll just say, like, I completely disagree that the viewership is too low. You know, you have to keep into consideration, there's also Facebook, right? A lot of people watch our meetings and videos on YouTube, and I don't have cable.
It's not the town meeting portion, it's the additional content that everyone has.
They want to do podcasts.
Yeah, podcasts. That's, that's one thing that I could say, okay, maybe they need to just find a way to do podcasts in the studio that we can accommodate, instead of having a separate location for that. That part I didn't understand or hear initially, but...
I did, I watched the meeting, and I'd be curious to hear what the actual request is versus what they really, what they're doing now versus what they're requesting, because it, it does seem crazy, that maybe that's the wrong word, because I, I'm fully in support of them if money wasn't an issue. But if we're talking about building, a building that is the same size as a new town hall, for needs that are, that are new, they seem more like wants, not needs.
Yeah.
And it's not that I don't support it, I do, but I think that that should almost, that should be a separate project that is vetted to see if the town wants to support, essentially, I don't even know if it's doubling, but whatever it is that PAC is trying to accomplish, which, again, I support them, I think that's a great lofty goal, but that seems very different from what they're currently doing. It seems more like a want versus a need, based on what I watched from the meeting. And again, I haven't seen all their actual ask, but I'm not sure that I would support a want versus a need without it going to, to the people to decide that.
I agree for any additional space to support new services, but they definitely need a studio at a bare minimum, in my opinion.
How much space do, do they have now?
They currently have a little less than 2,000 square feet, but it's based on the existing classroom sizes. So, some of these, you know, if you see their new space, they have one classroom, 1,000 square feet now, that's really the, the up in their studio, primary space, 1,000 square feet. And then they're using another 1,000 square feet for some other things. But, so this would be an increase, but again, the existing classroom sizes at TC Passios are 1,000 square feet. So, it, you know, and is, is it the best utilized space now? I think 1,000 square feet is being efficiently utilized, and, and maybe 1,000 is not being efficiently utilized. They've been able to pare their request down to, again, 1,400. But should we try to accommodate that 1,400, between 1,400 and 2,700, or do we keep it in our original plan, which is to address it in the next phase of this?
Has it ever been explored to have a shared studio with surrounding towns?
That's not within the Municipal Building Design Committee.
No, but just PAC. Has PAC looked, I mean, because every town has their own local...
That'd be a question for PAC.
Yeah.
I would like to hear from PAC. I mean, I'm...
If that's the biggest, like, space need of a nice, full, comfy studio, maybe it makes sense to have a...
A regional area or something.
Exactly.
The limitations on PAC is, are that they don't, they, they don't want to be in Brook's House, they don't, because it creaks, they don't want to be in this building because it creaks. You know, I think we've communicated that you can go on top of the floor to eliminate the creaking, but that's still too much of a concern, and, and they're not interested. So, it really has become a standalone site. Something Chris Ruth mentioned, and I want to publicly say, is that there is some appeal to 925 Mass Ave.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, that is beyond the scope of what we are working on with Taylor and Burns.
That's the gas station?
Yes.
I just was like, wait, what?
It's beyond the scope of what we're working with Taylor and Burns. We can't ask them to look at that property. But if they were to figure out the square footage of a building and kind of get the general layout of it within this concept, and, and we were to know the square footage of what's available on that property, it becomes a cut and paste. And so, we could get some of that developed here, but for a future site.
The problem then becomes if, you know, we do have some sort of catastrophic failure that Chris is talking about, you know, at, at TCP, then what do we do with PAC in the meantime? If we're not accounting for it in the new building, well, then what? So, it becomes a...
And PAC specifically does not want to be in the new building. They do not want to be in copy, but they want to be connected to it.
They might not have to have, I mean, we might need a fallback, maybe we have an A and a B.
We're going, we're going to renovate this building, right?
Correct.
I hope the floors don't creak after the renovation is done. I mean...
I think you might get some creaking.
I would say that, where I stand is, I want to hear from PAC about what, what they are currently using, what they need, what they want, and make all those distinctions at the very floor, basement level. I would say they, they should not get less than the space they already occupy.
Yeah.
So, I think that would have to be accommodated for.
I can invite them in if we want to talk to them in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be helpful.
All right.
And I'd like to know if 925 would be big enough.
Yeah, we can at least explore, in my opinion. I don't see an issue with it.
Because that's a hard property to sell. It's, it's hard.
Yeah.
And that's a ways out. That's not a, that's not a quick...
Right.
None of this is.
Well, that's true.
Like, what, what about the food pantry?
So, the food pantry is in a part of the building that is not having the water infiltration. That is, and there's funding available to replace a portion of that roof, and I think that the guidance or the, the thought process from, from Chris Ruth is that it was initially planned to be in the middle of the building, and that they, he would rather spend the money on the front portion of the building that's currently utilized instead.
I thought it was beyond the roof that was the issue. I thought there was also heating issues.
It's multiple.
Yeah.
Furnace issues.
Yeah.
Furnace, boilers, it's, it's a lot of stuff.
I mean, it's, the clock is ticking.
No, the clock was ticking...
Years ago.
Eight years ago. Ten years ago.
Well, we hit snooze, and it's about to go off again.
Our Karen Cussie, the clock was ticking.
That's why to say it's outside of the scope, I mean, it's at a point where the urgency, I think it definitely is your scope, so, the committee's...
Well, it, 925's not in our scope, but...
Oh, sure.
But, again, the, the committee's phasing of this was that PAC, the town clerk storage, the food pantry, and all the other functions that happen in the front wing of TC Passios would not be addressed in Turkey, in, in Town Hall, Ritter, or the new town, or, or the new town hall. So, that, there was not part of this plan. That's why the ask is, is do we now bring PAC over into this? And so, if the plan is to meet with them, I can provide the board with the presentation that they provided to me that goes over their space needs request, what it initially was, what their pared-down request was. There, I will note that there are some factual errors on their slides.
So, maybe we give them the chance to...
Well, I'd like them to present it, and then you can rebut whatever errors they make in their presentation.
Yeah, but I can, I'm saying, I'm going to forward it to you, but there's some factual errors in the slides. Because it talks about, like, Turkey Hill, and we never talked to them about Turkey Hill. We just mentioned loosely that that was the vision.
Talking about this, after talking about the Prop 2 and 1/2 structural deficit and
Talking about this, after talking about the Prop 2 and 1/2 structural deficit and the CPA, as, you know, these are all startup, these are all things that are ages old, ages old. We just keep having the same conversation.
Yeah.
And, you know, what it takes the town to move on these things, I've been doing this for a long time. I still don't get it. I don't know what motivates them to move on these things.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. And I don't have a committee report. None of my committees have met this week since our last meeting. Upcoming meetings, we will not meet until January 7th unless there's some ARPA emergency that requires a meeting, but I don't think that's going to happen, fortunately. And then January 14th for our Town Manager interviews and also January 15th as well. Public comment, is there any public comment from the interim Town Manager?
I just want to wish everyone a safe, healthy and happy holiday.
Same to you.
We'll get back at it after Christmas.
All right. Any public comment from the public, Mr. Bowen?
Can everybody hear me okay?
It's very quiet, so you'll just have to speak up a little bit.
Okay, well, let me yell.
Yep.
I don't like to do that too often, but I just wanted to say, I'd like to thank Ezekiel for his work. Mr. Chairman, you're correct. Ezekiel has gone above and beyond considering the pay level that he's at to be able to provide this town with a resource of skill that we haven't seen here. And I'm quite grateful for that. He has been always open to the public. He's been an avid person to be able to communicate with the public with regard to things regarding the finances of the town. He returns phone calls. He's an excellent, excellent employee. And it was an excellent choice for this board to be able to ratify his, his position and have him hired. And I think he was hired under Heather before Carter came. I'd also like to thank Mr. Scullumbrini. I'm grateful that actually he's on the school committee. I'm also grateful that he's on the Budget Task Force and Renee as well. I can't say enough about the work that you guys have been doing with regard to that. But I'm going to say something that's a little bit unpopular, unfortunately. So, Mr. Scullumbrini, I think that you're wrong about Weston's plan as well as if you compare that to Dover's plan of how they operate and manage their town, okay? I think that we are quite in comparison to both of them. I know we keep looking at Maynard and I think that we're looking at Maynard in the wrong preset. Maynard has a lot of commercial and places as opposed to residential. And Maynard is not a comparable town to us. We don't, we don't have a divided tax bracket like Maynard does, okay? Where the corporations pay more money than the residents. So that being said, I think that Mr. Scullumbrini is a little bit off on the Weston's plan, okay? In that we can't afford every year annually a 5.5% tax increase in this town. And I know that may sound unpopular and that's almost double of what the 2 and 1/2 was designed for. But when 2 and 1/2 was designed under Reagan, 2 and 1/2 was designed as a benchmark. It allowed for the override, okay? But every town was not going to be able to afford their, their needs on 2 and 1/2%. But the minimum needs would be 2 and 1/2%. And I think we've gotten into a mantra of 2 and 1/2% is just where we have to be. We have to stay within budget at 2 and 1/2%. And that's where people's mentality are. And I think that is a cause for our elected officials to sit there and say that, no, that is not where it's at. So that tax increase of 2 and 1/2% for fixed income folks in town is going to be a problem, which I, I'm fully understanding of that, okay? In order to protect these folks, we have done that where we can say that if you have an annuity and a pension and social security payments, not like state or federal employees don't have social security payments, that they can be scheduled out of having to pay extra tax. And the portion of those people within town are so small compared to the portion of the people in town that make a minimum of an average of $125,000 a year per property owner. This town doesn't seem to have a problem being able to afford a 5.5% increase every year. So that being said, to exempt folks who are not paying into social security, you know, those folks are losing $1,600 to $1,800 a month in income, but they're compensated for, you know, they're compensated for their annuity and their pension, but when they pass, what do their children? They take their property, four or five acres, they sell it to a developer, put six, six homes on it and they collect the money and they disappear. So the reality is that sending a 5.5% tax against people is definitely not a problem and it shouldn't be a problem. That would be an average of roughly about $132 additional per taxpayer per month to be able to, one, pull the state out at $10 million a year, which Ezekiel highlighted.
Mr. Bowen, you've gone on for over three minutes. Do you want to at least wrap it up soon?
Yeah, sure. So that $132 a month paid for for a couple of years would not only keep our $2 million of surplus money, it would also keep us with the state out of our business and we would fund and finance ourselves, just like Weston and Dover does. They keep the state out of their business. The other issue is, is that the superintendent needs to exercise her, you know, her discretion, okay, on these kids, on these IEPs, okay? She can knock these kids down to a 504 plan, okay, which limits the IEPs. She's not doing that. She has that discretion of the DCE to do that.
All right, Mr. Bowen, I'm sorry, but I'm going to cut you off. I gave you about five minutes. All right?
And I'm, and I'm just saying is that she needs to, you know, cut that off to be able to limit the expense for the school because some of the kids that are on IEPs...
All right. Is there any public comment from the board?
No, just wish everyone happy, healthy holidays and happy new year.
Ditto. Doesn't say, it doesn't have this holiday cheer when you say ditto, but I don't want to keep saying it. Right. Here, here, that's probably better, yes.
Ho, ho.
There's more coming down.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It is 10:35 PM and the select board is adjourned. I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. I wish you all a great new year and we will see you in 2025. All right, have a good night, everyone.